The terrific babies. I need to, oh, there we go. Oh, hey, listen, I'm about to just open this. I love you guys, I enjoy that. Um, I did have a question, I, I could have fired me, say, I'm sure. I mean,
Not funny, the stroke that headed your way is a loon. It becomes today, tomorrow, or next Tuesday.
Or never, right?
Wrong. Six months to be outside.
How do you know that?
I'm a doctor, see? You got a high blood pressure, General. You drink, you smoke, twenty pounds overweight without the medals. There are two ways you can avoid a stroke. One, you go to Tokyo, you check into a hospital, and you start taking care of yourself. Two, sit on a landmine.
You're trying to scare me, young man, you're not succeeding.
True. Unlike the other guys who come through here, it's up to you whether you live or die.
Ben Durk, yes, I've got a war on fight. Thank you. Uh, I'll define. I can tell you what is true.
Good, I have a corn thief on ride with my boot.
My wife, my parents is gone.
For just nineteen dollars a month, you'll help us continue the life-saving research and treatment.
The fact that they are researching and they are saving these children, it's, it's so important. We wouldn't be where we are without St. Jude, and in turn, we wouldn't be where we are without those people that have donated. They're the reason why my son's still alive.
You can help St. Jude save the lives of children like Beckett.
Is it true, girl, that a coach that could fill in the market for a personal position?
That's right, Ben.
I'm perfect for the job. I like your recommendation.
You've got it, and mine, it's mine, the most carried.
I'd appreciate it, sir, if you'd send a letter to the general outlining my qualifications.
Good idea.
It's always a great experience. Great seeing what I get today. We'll start with our pledge, and then we'll have a moment of silence. So Rich Woodsayer, former football coach for the large city school district of Middletown. Still is pressure, mother of town of Montgomery supervisor. Steve Pressure, John G. Supin, senior retired town of Walkeel highway supervisor. For thirty-four years and a member of the Silver Lake Company Fire Department.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Want to ask you to keep in prayers the victims in Pennsylvania of the assassination attempt on, on President Donald Trump. Let's keep going with our prayers, too. So, we're gonna start with an award presentation to a young man who did something that was actually fantastic. And, you know, it's good to see young people out here doing great things for others. And, you know, they've always been a supervisor to support our youth to make sure that they are our future. So, uh, we're going to recognize this young man, Henry Martin Maine, who, when he saw the DPW, um, boys in town walking, working on his road. He decided to put a stand to give them lemonade, and I think that's a great, a great deal, and we wanna recognize him. So, we're gonna go up there and bring him up and give him a certificate. It's gonna be working. He's the next commissioner. Here with us is our highway supervisor, Bill Fadani.
From, from the DPW, sir.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I can turn that around, right?
Great, so we got a couple of public hearings, we're gonna first start with our first public camp hearing notice, read by Madam Plut, Inisengrashia.
Just, just before we start, I, if I can ask, um, you gentlemen are sitting down, if you look around and see a lady or someone elderly that needs a seat, please feel free to offer them your chair. Thank you.
It's two here, if anybody needs. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Service is hereby given that there has been introduced before the town, for the town of Walkeel, a local law entitled, "A Local Law Amendment, Section 233-7" of the Town Code of the Town of Walkeel, New York, establishing a no parking zone on the north side of Inwood Road. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Walkeel on July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven twenty-five P.M. at Walkeel Town Hall, Ninety-Nine Tower Drive Building A, Middletown, New York, to consider the adoption of the enforced introductory local law. Any resident town of Walkeel is entitled to be heard upon said introductory local law. Such public hearing copies are available for review at Walkeel Town Hall, Ninety-Nine Tower Drive. The Town of Walkeel make every effort to, every effort to ensure that the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and/or reasonable accommodation should contact the Town Clerk. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Walkeel, Inisengrashia Town Clerk.
Thank you.
And the notice was published and posted in accordance with law. And this is, uh, this is a local law. It's hard to hear. That better?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. This is a local law to consider establishing a no parking zone on the entire north side of Inwood Road. Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. So, we have this public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak on the public hearing, we got in the no parking zone on the north side of Inwood. Uh, please come up, state your name. And where you live. You have three minutes. Anyone on Zoom?
The board wish to add anything?
No, can't be coined.
Uh, just that, uh, there's been a concern there for years. Uh, to keep the parking on one side of the road allows for two lanes of, of traffic to pass through. Uh, something that we looked at with the Commissioner and the Highway Department, and it just, it just makes sense to go ahead and have parking on the one side and not on both, so. That's, that's really all that there is to this.
Um, nothing more to add to that. It's a simple law, I, I think it's going to benefit the people that live there, the residents, um, have expressed, and I think it, it, it will help the traffic flow.
Thank you. Councilman Benno.
I have no comments on this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Johnson is not here today. Uh, he did advise me that he was not gonna be here. Anyone else on the audience? That being said, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Do we have to read the notice again?
Yes.
So, this is,
These are continued public hearings.
These are continued public hearings. Um, and before we start, I'm pretty sure everyone wants to come up here and think, and it was their opinion. I wanna make a statement, and I'm speaking to everyone in this room. Who hasn't joined in time at the Orange County Fair with their family?
Who has?
Who here, who here thinks?
Do we have more volume, please?
Who here thinks that it's unique and good that we have these races in the town? Who here thinks that the town of Walkeel is trying to stop the races or the fair in the town?
Yeah.
You guys are confused. Yeah. You're confusing you with the fairground owners. Time and time again, the fairground owners have been telling people who are supportive of the races in the fairground that the town is the problem. But the truth is that the owners and their attorneys have asked the town to support zoning change, that we change the fairgrounds forever. And most recently, has asked the town to support warehouses at the fairground. The property is not currently zoned for warehouses. I do not support warehouses at the fairground. The chairman does the rest of this part. If you, if you are here tonight because you were told that the town is against the races or the fair, I would suggest you draw your attention to the owners of the fairground. The fairground has changed how they operate on their own. They have reduced the number of races at the Speedway on their own. They have changed the fairgrounds to be less high than it used to be. Over the last couple of years, they have decided to hold major events with no communication to the town, and all have been proven to be a major complication to the town. The town is not against public assembly and the use of the fairground. The town wants the fairgrounds to be successful. The town sees the fairground as part of our family. Therefore, we expect communication and respect from them. We are asking for two things. The town is considering event permits for more than five thousand people so that we, the town of Walkeel, prepare to public safety and impact that it has on the town in advance of these events. We are open to your suggestions on how these new changes can be implemented or improved. If you are here for any other reasons or have been told otherwise, I will refer you to the Orange County Fairgrounds and Speedway. Thank you. We are now, um, public hearing is open, please, if you wanna come up. Step up, state your name, that three minutes.
The first, right, the first public hearing continued is the, um, change to the exemption that the fairgrounds currently has on the noise ordinance. Uh, as I notified, um, council for the fairgrounds this morning, there was a, um, there was a change that the board made originally. The intention was to eliminate completely the exemption that the fairgrounds has for, from the noise ordinance. But in considering, uh, moving forward and trying to work cooperatively, the board, uh, is proposing an amended local law that the exemption for the racetrack and the fairgrounds will remain up until midnight every night. So, go ahead and have the events have an exemption from the noise ordinance up until midnight, and then, you know, the event should end. So, just with that clarification, uh, first gentleman.
Sure. Uh, good evening, uh, supervisor and councilman. Um, I just wanna clarify something.
Please state your name, but then,
My name is Christopher Gerda, and it is my family that has owned the Orange County Fairgrounds for three generations. Uh, unfortunately, my brother Michael Gerda, he's been the manager of the fairgrounds down there for the past fifteen, twenty years. Had an important family obligation that he had to do, and he cannot be given. Uh, I just wanna clarify one thing if I'm on the clock. So, it's my three minutes, I'm talking about noise. Yes. And I'm gonna conflate my three minutes with noise with another three minutes on the permit, if we could do that, so you only hear three ones, but I'll go six minutes.
Is a, it's permit, you know?
Yes, I'm okay with that. All right, sure. But, at, at first, I liked the, the issue turned that way, so I also wanna say hello to all the friends of Orange County Fair.
As, as honor, respectfully, it's to address the board, not the crowd. So, if you proceed to address your comments.
It's a public hearing.
A public hearing to address the board, thank you.
So, the hundred eighty-fourth Orange County Fair is going on right now, as we speak. It is the longest operating county fair in New York State. Since eighteen ninety-seven, the fair has been located where it is currently located in town of Walkeel. This is also the hundred-fifth season of car racing at the fairgrounds. It's the oldest continuously operating dirt track in the United States. The first car race was held there in nineteen ninety. The Ramola Stock Cars on a Saturday night is a summer staple. Eastern States Weekend, usually held in mid-October, is a premier stock car racing event with entries from all over the East Coast and Canada. Throughout the late eighties, the nineties, and early two thousands, were numerous big-name concerts held in the open-air stadium located in the center of the Speedway. I remember the radio advertisement for the Pepsi Concert Series. You know it's somewhere when they're rocking in Middletown, and everybody heard those concerts. The Orange Classic Running Race used to start and finish at the fairgrounds. Operations at the fair continue. And Supervisor Serrano, as you pointed out, even though this isn't a public hearing regarding warehousing and change of use, you decided to open it with saying that we wanna put warehouse in there, right? We wanna keep operating. Okay? Yeah, it's been less, it's gone down. Communities changed a little bit. There's less concerts, there's less stock car races, there's financial pressures on the fair, but they still continue. We still host car shows, rodeos, motorcycle races, numerous trade shows, and other various events. Because we are an event facility. That's what we do, we put on events, more than five thousand people. More than five thousand people at our, are at our events continuously. Just like if the mall opens up their doors, everybody has more than five thousand people. Do they have to get a permit? That's a question to think of. Hundreds of people are employed seasonally at the Orange County Fairgrounds. Millions of dollars of economic impact is generated for our area from operations at the fairgrounds. The yearly fair, stock car races, motorcycle races, concerts, and other shows and events have a symbiotic relationship in putting the one-hundred-acre facility to its best use. Due to the financial strain from taxes and basic infrastructure upkeep, the fair cannot exist without the motorsports and other events. Again, we are an event facility. The yearly fair, motorsport, and other operations at the fairgrounds predate the town code. The sections of the code of the proposed law now seeks to modify, granted the fairgrounds specific exceptions to the noise control and permitting for mass events. This makes sense. The reasoning behind it is just and sound. As a community grows around an ongoing operation, the government cannot come in and stop that operation. We have not changed what we do or how we do it. We have not changed what we do or how we do it. We are an event facility. Our events create noise. And I'm glad that there was some thought from last month to now. In moving the noise restriction to eleven fifty-nine. But even that, that still is unworkable. It's better, but it's not practical. If you go through. The ordinance that you want us, that you want us to now have to abide by. If we have one event end. At ten o'clock at night or eleven o'clock at night. We can't even have machinery moving up, moving around equipment barriers to set up for an event the next day. As the end at eleven fifty-nine. If we have an event end. And people are at the thirty-first lap. There might be music coming out of there. Past eleven fifty-nine. It's still not workable. If we have a stock car race that runs a little late, eleven fifty-nine, we have to drop the checkered flag, no matter what lap it's at. It's not workable. Over the years, there's always been an understanding agreement, so we don't go past midnight. I, I challenge you to say once last time, we've had races go past midnight, that's been a problem. It hasn't happened. Removing our exemption to the mass gathering permit requirement is likewise ill-advised. And it causes an undue burden on the fairgrounds. Again, we're an event facility.
I had a little more. I have nothing, here, keep going.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We are set up to hold events that routinely are attended by more than five thousand people. We don't just put on one event. The way that your mass gathering permit is designed correctly. Is for people that no, don't normally have mass gatherings. Yankee Stadium, so they get a mass gathering permit for every game. We can't do that. It's onerous, it's too much. We can talk. I know my brother has meetings with you weekly, he says. We can talk, well, before events, right, there's, there's, there's often meetings. We can talk, we can talk more if you want. But not to go through a draconian permitting process. It's, it's too onerous. We don't need more bureaucracy. We don't need more government. We don't need more red tape. We need to be able to operate the facility. All that being said. We've always had a good relationship with the town. And we want to continue that relationship. Let's work collaboratively, collaboratively. Let's first identify the problem that the proposed amendment, amendments seek to address. So that we all understand what the problem is. Then let's work toward a mutually beneficial. Manner to move, to move forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beno.
I, I just have.
Wait, Mr. Gross, I have a.
I just have one thing I, I, I wanted to read, um, and before I read this. You know, I grew up with the fairgrounds, I worked at the fairgrounds as a kid, it's great. This, as the supervisor had said earlier, this has nothing to do with. The town trying to close down or stop the fair or stop the racing. As a matter of fact, if you talk to the residents that live near the fairgrounds. The, the sound of racing, um, dirt, dirt racing and all of that, it's like white noise. It's coming to that area because they're used to that. There, they don't complain about that. So it's, it's the, the change of events. As, as Mr. Gerder may reference to, that has become a major issue for the town. And, and one thing I, I want to make perfectly clear to everyone here. Again, the town is not against the fairgrounds. As a matter of fact, when we met with Mr. Gerder, we said, your success is the town's success. So we want to work together to make that happen. We've asked several times, please, you know, eh, yeah, the permits make sense, you know why? Because as you apply for the permit, you tell the town official, the building department, police, the ambulance. How, how big is this event, how many people are expected? So how many cops do we need? Probably to patrol, how many ambulants? Because we have a volunteer ambulance corps. If there is an ambulance corp to the fairgrounds because there's five thousand plus people there, guess what? The residents of the town are now exposed to no ambulance service. So that makes sense to open a permit and let the people that, that provide those services to protect the residents. And serve the town that information. And one thing, the, the thing I'm going to read at the last public hearing. Their attorney, Mr. Gerder's attorney representing the fairgrounds stated as such. As you are aware, there is an executive contract for sale of the fairgrounds. And some of the adjacent and associated property. The owners and sellers of this property, the Gerters. Are in contract with a buyer, a national developer, that has the financial wear-through. Reputation and many years of experience in developing state-of-the-art warehousing projects. The buyer wishes to purchase. The Orange County Fairgrounds property and secure approvals to build a nine hundred thousand square foot. Commercial warehousing and distribution facility. That was their attorney, that's the intention of what they want to do. And we specifically told them, well, first of all. That area is not zoned for warehousing. So that could never happen. So there, they want us to, to change the zoning to warehousing and, you know, that's illegal, it's, it's spot zoning. So I, I want everyone to be aware of that, I want everyone to be aware of what's going on in the background. And this is, this is the transcript from last, from the last public hearing, it's online, you can check it, don't take my word for it, it's out there. This is their attorney that said that. They're on contract to sell the fairgrounds to build possible warehousing. But we're not going to let it happen because it's not zoned for that.
Okay, anyone on Zoom who wants to speak? Please state your name. And then, where do you live? Raise your hand, anyone on there? Nope, anyone in the audience? Steve, come on up.
Uh, thank you Supervisor and Board members, I'm here to speak, uh, regarding the issues in front of you regarding the fairgrounds. As a lifelong resident of Orange County, more than fifty years, who grew up in the town of Walkeel, like Councilman Valentine, not too far down the road. Uh, two miles from the fairgrounds and the Speedway and went to Mechanics Town School, Middletown High School. Uh, the sounds of the Speedway on a Saturday night in our community always brought a sense of energy and excitement to, to the town. Uh, the Speedway was always here and part of the community, a century in operation is, is not anything to sneeze at. Uh, in fact, I remember my grandfather talking to me as a kid about the races there. Uh, the fairgrounds and the Speedway have had a positive economic impact on our local county and community. Uh, for many, many years, local businesses, restaurants, retail operations, and other, uh, businesses have greatly benefited from the influx of visitors. Uh, as well as the tax benefits to the county. Uh, people like Connie and Bev Foster, operated Foster Racing Photos. Bob Perrin had a great photography business, uh, as a result of the Speedway. Bob Maxwell and the family, uh, who are here today have had a family-owned, multi-generational concessionaire business. Who employed thousands of young people in our community over the years. Even successful businessman RJ Smith, who's a realtor, raced cars at the fairgrounds and used it to market his business. Uh, additionally, many young people learned a trade as a result of their exposure to the racetrack. Jobs and careers, auto mechanics, auto body, risk managers, even emergency medical technicians. Uh, were spurred interest as a result of, uh, their starts at the Orange County Speedway. And as was mentioned by Mr. Gerda, growing up here in the eighties, it was great to see so many big-name entertainers play right down the road here. Uh, I got to see my first concert, Tom Petty and the Heartbreakers, I think I walked there, uh, and was able to enjoy that. But acts like Bob Dylan, Aerosmith, yes, Guns N' Roses, playing pretty loud, to be honest with you, we hear them from our front step. Uh, and as Mike said, none of those commercials are ingrained in all our memories, you know it's summer when it's rocking in Middletown. Uh, the future of this property remains unknown, and we hope that it continues to be a source of tax rateables. Job creation and entertainment for the next century. Uh, Orange County respects home rule and the town board's decision to do what's in the best interest, uh, for the town, and we thank you for all your efforts. Uh, but with that said, we strongly encourage the town to carefully review the implications of changing. And restricting long-established Speedway and fairgrounds operational protocols. In an effort to minimize any potential negative impacts for the community and the owner of the property. Thank you very much.
Anyone on Zoom? RJ, I've seen someone on Zoom.
Oh, but no.
No one's raising their hand?
No.
You have the floor, RJ.
Good evening. Marjase Smith. Uh, my first visit to the Orange County Fairgrounds was in nineteen fifty-eight. When my father took a five-year-old to the stock car races. I was hooked. Been a motorsports enthusiast ever since, and been attending events at the fairgrounds ever since. Concerts, fair. Home shows, all kinds of different auto shows, all kinds of different events. My lifetime dream was realized when I was able to, at sixty years of age, race at the fairgrounds. And get squeak out one win and found myself in the winner's circle. So that's a, a. Lifetime dream of a childhood dream, dream. Um, in your nineteen sixty-nine mass gathering law. Was specifically written and designed. Drive away and prevent Woodstock Ventures from having a rock concert in Mr. Mills Fields. Um, the law succeeded in doing that. However, that law in nineteen sixty-nine, your fore, forebears. Saw fit to exempt. The Orange County Fairgrounds from that law, it's written right in the law. Through paragraph ten or eleven, paragraph ten or eleven. And what your law is to, eh, remove that exemption. The councilmen then and the board then realized for a number of reasons that was appropriate. First and foremost is vested rights. This has been a racetrack since eighteen fifty-seven. A fair operation with the Orange County Agricultural Society that owns the fairgrounds. Since eighteen ninety-seven. Motorsports since nineteen nineteen. Um, in fact, I have a map, uh, here, nine, a hundred and twenty-year-old map that shows the fairgrounds and a racetrack. But there's vested rights that you can't use in a lottery, deprive property owners of. And they were necessary to support the, the, as Mr. Gerder said, and all, everything goes on there. Is necessary to support the fairgrounds, everything that is planned and all the events there. Also, the historic significance of the fairgrounds. Um, again, dating quite, quite generations ago. And it was the, the. Shareholders of the fairgrounds of the agricultural society that put up the money to buy the land and build the buildings. And their, their descendants are now the shareholders of the agricultural society. The problem is. We all have hope. Despite what some of the owners wanted, would prefer to do, and I can't blame them because. There's financial interests involved. But we all have low hope that someone, somewhere will come up forward. And just like Mr. Gary did with the Woodstock Venture property in Bethel. And preserve it, we had, I'll ask for the same thing for three minutes because I'm. Talking to both the noise and the, but, uh. We all had hope that somebody will step forward, five, six years ago, six, seven years ago, we had somebody step forward. Who vested, my guess is millions, in the fairgrounds. New, new grandstands, new seats, new roof, uh, new bleachers, new bathrooms. New, uh, aprons, new track. Um, new infield, new lighting, new sound system. So we all have hope that somebody will step forward. And step in the shoes of, uh, Chris Larson and find the way to, like Mr. Gary did in the Bethel Woods. With the Woodstock site. With the, removing the exemption. And the conflict that, two exemptions and the conflict that it creates. Will preclude anybody from doing that. They will not say, I'm going to deal with getting a permit every time I want to hold an event. So by passing these laws, amending these laws, you're precluding the preservation of the fairgrounds. The Speedway and all that goes on there. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? I said, is that a hand raised?
Yeah, uh, yes. I have to turn it on mute.
Hello, my name is Alex Strasser, I'm from Scranton, Pennsylvania. I'd just like to ask a question. If there is by chance a rain out at the Speedway and you would like the Speedway to be in touch with you beforehand. Would there be no chance of a rain date or would those races just be furlonged?
It's up to the, it's up to the event coordinator, isn't it?
Yeah, the event coordinator will have to make that decision.
And that would, that would be a question for the event coordinator to answer.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Next.
I'm Anna Dana, I'm the Director of Tourism and Film for Orange County, I'm also a resident of the town of Walkeel. This place is amazing, I do love the town of Walkeel, and that's why I moved here in two thousand fourteen. I come here in support of, in general, of the recreational use of this property. I know that's not in jeopardy right now, and I know we're talking about some amendments. But I'm actually going to talk here instead of right here because maybe someday there will be another end user coming in. Maybe someone grander, maybe a developer that wants to have a mixed-use recreational park for the town of Walkeel, which would be amazing. And I'm just nervous that these amendments might scare some really great developers. Away if they can't conduct business and event space. So my question is, if there are going to be these amendments, what does that process look like? So if we have a, let's say, another rodeo come in or something else, and it happens to be between five and ten thousand people, which I would like. What type of process will that be, would it be a quick process? Can it be speedy, is it going to be, I'll get back to you in two months? These are the things I'd like to know because I want us to be user-friendly. I want us to attract people to the town of Walkeel and do some great things. So those really are my questions. I'm fully supportive of your leadership. I just want to make sure that we're not scaring away any future type of great development that can be here in the town of Walkeel. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Dana.
Hi. I can tell you that the process to, to apply for the permit is, is a no-brainer. It's, it's a piece of paper, as a matter of fact, in meeting with Gerder and the event planner, we suggested, you know, you have.
Mr. Cody.
You schedule these events once ahead of time, hopefully, and you know them, apply once ahead of time. And, and, and avoids any, any lag in time, I, but I, I will tell you that some of the stuff, we come to find out. Two, three days before, how can, how can the town support an event of five and ten thousand people? At three days before or two days before, that's, that's a problem. And, you know, one thing. And, and, and RJ spoke to it. We all want the same thing, we want the fairgrounds to survive, we want the fairgrounds to, to prosper and stay. But right now, according to their lawyer, again, I will read it. The owners and sellers of this property are in contract with a buyer, a national developer, that has the wearable and reputation. And experience in developing state-of-the-art warehousing projects. So hopefully, they're listening to you folks, hopefully, they're hearing what you're saying. And they won't sell it to someone that wants to put a warehouse there. And they'll sell it to someone like you said, Ms. Dana, that wants to put some activity there that can, can benefit everybody.
But, you know, just I want to add on the process. The reason that we need the, the reason we need to know is so, the safety of the people that are going. Whatever the event is going on now, are going to the fairgrounds. If you have five thousand people or more at an event. There needs to be some type of crowd control, EMS. These need to be in place so that. And when you put in your permit, there's supposed to be in seven days before. That is not happening. You know, we talk about these concerts in the eighties. From when I've been told, there was communication between the town and the fairgrounds, so that we were ready for them. There has been none. A week before, a couple of days before. Mr. Cody?
Um, my name is Mike Cody. I live at Seven Ridgewood Avenue. I have nothing against the fairgrounds, I think, I think it's great. The only thing is, the fairgrounds, we've got to get more involved in the community. We've got to do more things for the veterans, for the 4-H, for, to draw people. We gotta do more things for the veterans, for the 4-H, for, to draw people in the community. The other thing is this, is when they have concerts or races, they should advertise it more with the people that live in the area. The reason why is you can't get out on Carpenter Avenue or you can't get down East Main Street because I live there. I can't get in my home. A couple of months ago, they had a truck show, which was beautiful. But there was so many trucks that they were blocking East Main Street. Uh, gotta get more involved in the community. That's what I'm saying. I'm, I, I love these fairgrounds. I love your fireworks. But the thing is this is that it, you gotta, you gotta get more traffic control. You gotta get more cops or whatever they gotta do for the people who live in the area. Because if there was a fire or anything, you couldn't get down the road. So I, that's only my, my complaint. If, if you can solve that, you would have the community behind you. And that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
And that's exactly what the permit process will hopefully resolve. It's, it, supervisor brought up how, you know, it's for the safety of the people who go to these events, and it is. But it's also the safety of the residents that live around there. I know that truck show, I drove down East Main that day. Um, you know, what if there was an emergency down one of those side streets and, and, you know, every, every minute matters, every second matters to somebody who's having a heart attack, having a stroke. But you can't get there. You can't get there. So we talk about the, the owner's rights of the fairgrounds. What about the right for that guy or gal to live? Okay, wh- why, what's gonna, what's gonna happen if somebody does die? Well, help the fairgrounds able to do whatever they want. Right? Oh, I guess somebody died. Tough. You know, stop building what? I can't hear. I don't, I don't build anything. I don't build anything. People own property. They build, they develop it, just like our fairgrounds. They developed it, right?
Hey, if you wanna be, if you're not, hey, let's not make it like that. Let's, listen, we're having a conversation. I think it's much well-established to everyone in this room that this board is not against the fairgrounds unlike that been put out there. Okay, we need to be respectful. If you can't be respectful, you have to leave. Because we're having a discussion, we have a public hearing, and we need to be respectful of everyone's opinion. Okay, because I can tell you that everyone in this room does not know everything that's going on. And there are things that have been said, that have been stated on this great thing we call social media, which are not true. So we're gonna go back to um Zoom, see if anyone's up there. And there's no one with a hand up? Or go back up here, sir? State your name and where do you live?
My name is Donnie Elliott. I own a business across the street from there. I have no problems with their events. I have no problems with the town. Okay, I understand your point of view. Okay, I was in, I was in EMS. I get what you're saying. Okay, my problem only comes about is, how did ten thousand people know there's an event and our town doesn't? Apparently, within the town, there's some kind of communication loss. I believe they're permitted through the county every year. So I believe that the county and the town need to get back together. The owner might not, owner needs to step up also, without a doubt. Do I like all those events? No. I'm gonna tell you right now. I don't like them. They're loud, they're I, I talk in French, so I, I gotta control myself here because I gotta be respectful. But at the same time, you understand what I'm saying. Some of your reasoning I get. I get all these trucks showed up and you guys didn't have the police force because you weren't notified of it. But at the same time, you drive by the fairgrounds, there's a race August fourth because there's a big banner on the side of it. There's a big banner hanging on a building of every single concert that's happening at the fair. I understand where you're coming from and I'm sure your police drive by the fairground. Okay, I just wish my, my problem comes into this in one thing and one thing only. What happens when it surpassed you? When you guys are gone? And the next one comes in and says, oh, we don't like the fairgrounds. How do we stop it? Well, let's make the, they put this ordinance in with decibels or event, we just, we won't give them the permit. That's my only problem. Okay, I'm a businessman and looking at it from a business point of view and the town's, the town's point, I have to obey your laws, they have to obey your laws. You have to go by your laws. I remember when the fireworks started at the um, your golf course and there was complaints there. And now today, it's a wonderful thing. The fairgrounds is wonderful. The races are wonderful. They had to change their business plan because economically it doesn't work for them. I'm gonna tell you this, as somebody that is there every single day, because I work like a dog, I have more problem with the school events than I do with theirs. Okay, I just wish you guys look into the, you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, look into the future. But at the same time, remember that's a part of it. So I ask, I appreciate the town board. I appreciate you saying no to the, to the, to the warehousing. I know they wanna sell it. They wanna they wanna go to somebody else. I get it. Hopefully, somebody comes along and it gets to stay. If there's any way the town buys the thing, I'll be your first promoter. No.
Good evening, board. My name is Farquhar Gonzalez and I am the Assistant Property Manager of the Walkeel Living Center at four five five Shuts Road Extension. We happen to be the neighbor of the raceways. My residents enjoy the races. My residents enjoy the rodeos, the fireworks. What we don't enjoy is being woken up at seven AM. Music that is deafening. We're not talking about music that you could dance to. We're talking about music. Our windows are rattling, televisions are full volume, windows are closed, and you cannot hear yourself talk. We're against last event they had, the Sunday before Memorial Day. They held an event where women were being auctioned. We have recorded these events. We have it on audio. They were speaking in Spanish and I could play it for the gentleman who thinks it's funny and I'm making it up. He is supposed to be our neighbor. Why has he never stepped on our grounds and listened to what we have to listen to? There is two DJs running at the same time. Different kind of music, so you can't even enjoy it if you wanted to. They're just battling over each other. The rodeo, the races, we sit out there and we enjoy them. We're talking about the battling of music. We're talking about the people that are walking into our property, going to Price Chopper, purchasing alcohol, passing out on our property, dumping their garbage there. Um, traffic during the big event.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, we have a ton of people in here tonight. Everyone is welcome. However, when we have a speaker who's addressing the board, the meeting's being recorded and the noise in the background, number one, it makes it difficult for the board to hear these valuable comments from everyone, everyone, everyone's side. But it's also difficult to pick it up so the clerk can take minutes and the meeting can be recorded. So I'm respectfully asking everyone, if you have to talk, please take it outside and then come back in and join us. Thank you.
We enjoy the events. Our issue is seven AM to one AM on a Sunday is unreasonable. It's not fair to us. The traffic, we can't get EMTs into our property for our residents. It need be because it's bounce long. Um, I just want it toned down a little just so we can have a good quality of life. We don't want them to go away. We enjoy it. People who were born and raised here in Orange County and people who moved up from the city, everyone enjoys it. We just feel that it should be a little more controlled. We are not being informed. We follow a calendar of what events are on there. They're not updated correctly. So we'll be shocked as to, okay, there's an event that's going on all day. Maybe it's a couple of hours. Okay, then a week later, they will update an event. Um, it doesn't always match with some of the calendar. So we want real-time information. We want noise control and we wanna be safe. We wanna be able to have our police and our EMS coming to the property if need be due to the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Step right up, state your name, where you live.
Hi, I'm Stella Reyes. I've lived in Orange County my entire life. I can't imagine, or I can't remember a year where, of my life, where I didn't go to the fairgrounds, whether it was Diesel of New York, Orange County Fair. The fair is a hundred and eighty-plus years old and you're trying to limit when that fair happens, how that fair happens, when people can join in and have community gatherings. I mean, we remember from COVID that people are not what they used to be because we were separated for so long. Why would you change that now? Why would you try and separate people now? And if you get rid of diesels because of the noise or because it goes late, you'll have kids in the middle of the city in Uber drag racing or you'll have them doing burnouts in the middle of the street and then you're using highway money that's not necessary because you feel that the Orange County fairgrounds are wrong. If you have kids doing burnouts in the middle of the street, you have potholes being made due to the rubber running against the concrete and against the asphalt. Then you have to fill them in using taxpayer money or other money that comes from other funding. If we have the Orange County fairgrounds, you can limit it better. You can have burnouts that are only in that one very distinct pit. They don't happen anywhere else in the entire property. But when you take away fairgrounds and you take away people's fun and people's hobbies, you isolate people and that is the exact opposite of what we need, especially right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
We're not, we're not taking away the fairgrounds. And, and um as far as the burnout, I, I, I can tell you that I personally had to run out with the police after one of those events because they decided to extend the burnouts into the gallery more, into the Cowdor's Plaza and everywhere else. And it just funneled into the rest of the town and caused chaos. And, and the police were running all over the place trying to control it. And, you know, we can't use banners standing uh in the air as permits. And it just makes, I, I don't get, permits allow the town to know what is going on in a certain area in the town. It allows the town to now go and say, hey, there's this event going on and some of you have gotten a, a, a phone call or an audio voice saying, hey, be aware that Cottage Street Extension is going to experience high traffic volume because the fairgrounds is having an event. And that's what we do. When we get a permit and we know what's going on, we let the residents know. We inform the residents that, yeah, there's going to be traffic. Use caution. We inform the police. We inform the ambulance. We inform the fire department. This way, all our residents are safe. And again, we're not doing away with the, with the fairgrounds. You gotta speak to the owners to that, okay? They're in contract with someone that wants to put a warehouse there. I don't know how many times I have to say it. We want the fairgrounds here. We want the races. We want the events. Has to be logical. It has to be fair to everyone.
Thank you. Step up. You're welcome. Me, please?
Good evening, everyone. Oh. My name is Joseph Phillips. I'm a former resident of Orange County and the town of Walkeel. I reside now in Candor, New York, which is right outside Dithica, New York. So I drove down specially for this meeting. And I wanted to point out real quick that the main reason why we come to, I come to town of Walkeel is for the events that are held at the racetrack. August, the uh nostalgia night a couple of months ago, my brother and his girlfriend came up to Springfield, Missouri to attend that event. They spent a week here spending money in town of Walkeel for food, hotels, groceries, gasoline. I spent two nights in town of Walkeel when I came down, spending money at hotels, gasoline, excuse me, food and whatnot. Oh, and I do understand there is a new hotel tax. So I contributed to that as well. But uh, I just like the, you know, I'm stating the obvious, brothers have stated the benefits at the fairgrounds and the racetrack as well as Maxwell's has to this community. And it's not just for the people that tend to races. It's for the people that work at those events like for Maxwell's and stuff. That's money they have to buy clothes for their kids, gas, tires for their cars, whatever the case may be that they're spending in the town of Walkeel. So it's my honest opinion that the town of Walkeel and the Gertas and all the lawyers and everybody finally sit down, reach a compromise, have adult conversations so we can put this to rest because it's getting tedious every six months here in this argument about what's gonna happen with the track, whether we can have races or not. Oh, and I will point out real quick that when I'm on the way driving on two eleven, there was three or four cars out there drag racing that I assume had nothing to do with the racetrack property being that there were Toyotas, Audis and one Camaro. So, thank you.
Anyone on Zoom?
Oh, I do.
Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay, sir?
I, I just wanted to first say that I own a Honda CRV, so I won't be drag racing. Now, and you can thank my wife for that. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here, Thomas Landrigan, calling the Barbara Landrigan Council for the Orange County Fairgrounds and uh following up very briefly on some of the items that Chris Gerda spoke to. First and foremost, and I think you've heard from the gallery here today, this is the town searching for a solution to a problem that no one thinks exists. They like the fairground as it is. They don't want to see a change to the exemption or any noise ordinances or any permitting processes that would slow down or impede the continued operation of the fairgrounds as it has time immemorial. That I said last time, has had an enormous positive impact on the community, whether it be jobs, memories, the monies that it brings into hotels, uh businesses. You've heard from business owners and from the county and so on. There's no reason to impede that. I would like to, the crowd should know that when this first was proposed about a month ago, there was no eleven fifty-nine uh, you know, cap on the, on the noise exemption. It was twenty-four hours a day that we were no longer exempt from the noise ordinances, which would be a de facto shutdown of the Orange County Fairgrounds facilities. And we got that notice literally on the eve of the meeting and I'm so grateful so many people are here. If there's a one healthy byproduct that has occurred, we have spectacular interest in the fairgrounds, I'm told from the owners and we're grateful for your support. Um, let's talk a little bit about the permitting process because everyone said that would be a simple thing and not an impediment. Well, of course, it would be an impediment. We heard about efforts to potentially sell the premises. Well, yes, because it has a financial difficulty operating an operation of this type. Permitting of this type will be crippling and unworkable. First of all, it's a red herring. We're not here discussing a moratorium, everyone. We're here talking about the conduct of the Orange County fairgrounds. And we already have oversight from the county, uh, from the county. As a mass gathering facility, we already have county oversight and approval of our events. We are inspected by the Department of Labor. Police agencies, hop, hospitals are notified of our events. We have onsite security and medical emergency personnel. These happen all the time. Uh, Chris Gerda handed me and I, I, you know, we looked at the application requirements which say that twenty days prior to the event, we have to give you a laundry list of owner's things that we would have to submit to you. For, I actually thought the, the, one of the interesting comments was there was a young man in the gallery who said, what if there's a rain out? Everyone kind of poo-pooed that idea. Everyone kind of poo-pooed that idea. I said, what if there is a rain out? And I have to schedule another day or we have to have another day for an event. This is government interference in something that doesn't require it for a business that has already been struggling, that has a positive impact in the community, that doesn't require any change whatsoever. And I'll end with something very simple, which last time respectfully, because I, you know, I have some Irish and Italian blood. Maybe I could be a little more spirited than I should. My last invitation, when I was here last time, was please, I've known Will Frank since I had all my hair. He's a good man. I assume everyone in the town has well-meaning intentions. Why don't you table this resolution? You said there was bad communication, Mr. Serrano. I welcome you and Mr. Frank and the entire town to meet with us. And let's talk about how can be more workable. We think the county has tremendous oversight. I'm told third-party vendors also come to the town. I heard, one of the best lines I heard in the night, I couldn't script better. You could drive by and know there's, there are events happening. There's a website. But if you don't think that's good enough, come talk to us. We can have a lunch meeting once a month. I'll buy. You can come. We don't need a permitting process. This is, this is a red herring. We don't need this at all. There is no need for it. The application process will be onerous. And you're right, we have looked for an exit because we had people, I think RJ Smith mentioned Chris Larson, who's a wonderful person and one of the great, you know, developers, who was a benefactor that helped subsidize us. We need your help, not, not, not your oversight, not your onerous requirements, not the fees and all of these things that have never had to exist for as long as anyone in this room has ever been alive. You don't need this. And if you don't think we're communicating well enough, blame me, blame the lawyer. And come see me if that's all you have to say. I'll buy lunch for everybody.
Why don't you speak to the contractor? Speak to the contractor, the warehouse. Tell the people.
Mr. Valentin, Mr. Valentin, I already acknowledged. Wait, wait, I want to answer his question.
Okay, have a good night. Thank you.
How many times have you met? How many times have you met Eric and, and George? How many times have you met with the people of the fairgrounds trying to, to reach some type of agreement?
At least five times. And he was never at the meeting when I was there. And, and every, and, and one of those meetings, I said, and, and your test, I says, how many times are we going to meet and talk about the same thing and ask the same thing? You have to provide the town, at, at least the residents are concerned. They can't get into their roads. They can't get, you have to have traffic control. You have to have this. You have to have that. And every meal, we're going to work at it. Well, the events happened and we're back to square one several times. At least four, and, and probably more, asking the same thing, meeting with the people from the fairgrounds, meeting with the event coordinator, asking for the same thing. There has been communication. There has been civil conversation and talk around this specific topic. And again, we're not against the fairgrounds. We've stated, we support the fairgrounds. We support the races. It's music to everyone's ear. But we need to, to have some kind of knowledge of what's going on. It's the town and we need to make sure the residents and our roads are safe. Their success is our success. If you want to speak, you come up to the mic. Please don't scream out.
So, you know, thank you. Appreciate that. A little different from last time when you attacked us, but that's okay.
I thought you needed lunch, Mr. Serrano.
It's okay. I, you know, it, it's, it's nice. You, you're here with all these people and, you know, I have met with the owner of the fairgrounds. I have met with them. Every time, each time, we're going to work with you. Now we're here. So now because we're here, let's throw. We're willing to work with them from day one. I think I've said that from the beginning. No, you cannot.
That what you gave for noise ordinance two hours before that would shut us down last time and had to change it.
So just so everyone is aware, the Orange County permit, which I have here, it's, it's not the county giving the permission to gather. You know what it's for? Restrooms. Says it right here, clear. This Orange County permit is for restrooms. Okay, says it right there, for them to have their restrooms. I wish my building inspector was here who can speak about it more than I because I don't micromanage. And you know what? This is what Orange County gave them. For every event that's located here, again, we're not against this. We want communication. We want to do this. We, I've had more meetings with the owners of the fairgrounds in the last four months than my first two years in office. And each time, we get back to the same thing. They don't need to do this. They don't need to do that. I'm active in communication, work with us so we can plan. Everyone here, you would not want to go to the fairgrounds for whatever reason, whatever event, and you get hurt. You want to be able to go to get medical attention. And if we can't do that, you're going to be upset. Communication, like they've done in the past, over the last couple of months, it has not happened. It has not. So we, we're trying to have a conversation here. I want to listen to everyone and get their opinions on this. So. Okay. So, anyone on Zoom?
No.
Next on, on the mic, please.
Hi, I'm Daniel Depew. My family has lived in the Town of Walco for two hundred years. And I'm the former supervisor of the town.
Thank you.
I'm a former four-Her and grew up from eight years old to about eighteen at the Orange County Fair. And support the fairgrounds tremendously. And I say that statement as I believe that everybody sitting up there believes they too support the fairgrounds. And I say that statement as if everyone behind me also supports the fairgrounds. When I was a councilman at twenty-one years old, sitting in the fourth ward, we had an issue with the fairgrounds regarding dust control. Some of you who are here tonight may remember where the town board, who met down on two eleven at the old town hall, was proposing a law about dust control for the fairgrounds. And you want to know why the town board was trying to propose some type of law about that? It was because at that time, the fairgrounds stopped taking care of its racetrack. I want to say that again. At some point in time, the fairgrounds stopped taking care of its racetrack. And you want to know who really supported taking care of its racetrack? The people who were driving the cars. Does anyone remember that? I'm a little older now, but I still maintain the audiographic memory that my, that God gave me. I remember what people say. And at that time, the fairgrounds made an argument that the town must be against the fairgrounds because the town's trying to deal with dust and get the fairgrounds to maintain its track. My uncle Kenny Baker, who was one of the greatest influences of my life, was a racer at that time, and he stopped the race because he could not see the driver ten feet in front of him. You could die because it was not being maintained. Does anyone who drove cars remember that time? Why did it take the town to tell the fair to maintain the tracks? Communication. I think the Gerda family are fine, fine people. I think they have been those who have been shepherds of the fairgrounds for a long time. And I recognize their financial frustration in regard to the fairgrounds. And I support a future where the Gerda family can make good on their investments and commitment to the fairgrounds. And I support that. I support a future where the history of racing at the fairgrounds will continue. I support a future where people of the region in Orange County can celebrate one of the last places where many people can join and have a wonderful experience en masse. If you today tried to cite the fairgrounds anywhere else in this region, no zoning would permit it. It would be difficult to do. I support that. I support that future. But I think we're here today because of bad communication. It's bad communication for anyone in this room to think that the town board doesn't support the fairgrounds. And it's bad communication for the fairgrounds to make people here think that they are one hundred percent supportive of the fairgrounds as a fairgrounds when they try to sell it for other things. Despite what those, despite what those circumstances may be. And I don't pick on in any way the Girdas for the financial stress of the fairgrounds. I would ask the board and everyone in this room and the Girdas to do something in the faith of what we've always had in this community in regards to this problem. I would ask for honest communication. For you, for the fairgrounds and for the people who enjoy it. Everybody deserves that. Everyone. And I would ask that if they're going to have events at the fairgrounds, they communicate those events to the people who live here. Not so the people who live here can say you can't have it, but more so that the people who live here can prepare for it and the hospital here can prepare for it and the emergency service can prepare for it and the people who want to enjoy it can prepare for it. Nobody likes standing in line for three hours to get into a six-hour event. That takes preparation on both sides. The fairgrounds can be the crown jewel of the Town of Walco inside of the crown jewel of the state, Orange County. But in order for that to happen, it will absolutely stop the mudslinging and it will stop people coming down offering somebody to buy you a lunch. I know each and every one of you have the ability to buy your own lunch. You look pretty good to me. Let's stop that stuff. Let's stop it. And let's have a conversation about who we want to be as a community and where we want to be with the fairgrounds in it as a fairgrounds. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Joan Wolfe. And I just want to say, I don't want to tell you how old I was when I went to my first stock car race, but a long time ago. The fairgrounds has always been an integral part of our county. And the stock car races should continue if they can. If we miss that noise on Saturday night, I think something is wrong. But getting to that, I said, I think the two most important words, the most important word in the dictionary is communication. I served as deputy supervisor under Dennis Cosgrove, Tom Nasworthy and Bob Brennan. We worked with Mike Gerda Senior. We worked. We communicated. We didn't have lunch and we didn't have anybody yelling at us, telling us what we should be doing. We talked and we, we never had a problem. So I think if there was more communication with the Girdas, and I'm sure that if Mike Gerda Junior was here, he might agree. And I know times have changed and events are good. We like to see events come. The system that you've got in place that we know what's happening, watch out for things happen. Now, yes, with those big trucks, I wished I had have, you know, popcorn, peanuts, everything out my yard. I could have made a fortune that day. So yes, do you have better planning? Of course you do. But in the interim, I, I'd ask for consideration with the events. If they are in the best interest of the citizens here, if they're not going to harm them, if there's going to be passage so that they can get through and that they don't have anything on Sunday. People in this town work all week long. They go to church on Sunday or maybe they have a family over on Sunday. But they need quiet. They need downtime. And having that horrendous, whatever it was, three weeks ago, was just, nobody could stay outside. Nobody could relax in their house. So I'd ask you to take into consideration that. So thank you.
Thank you. In the couple of meetings that I've had with the owners of the fairgrounds, every meeting started like this. The first thing I said is, I have no problem with you events. First thing I said, every meeting. Second thing I said is, we just need to know. We need to communicate. I don't know where that was lost. Because I have tried and, you know, it's great to see people out here, but I have tried to communicate. It's to me is that I feel that this is not shared. Whatever information you were given on this thing, again, like I said, every social media were not the facts. And I wish Mike Gerda was here tonight. I really do. So he can speak about our meetings and how they went and why we are at this position. Yeah, I don't like coming here yelling at us, like we're supposed to do what you say because the almighty. That's not, yeah, we're having a conversation. So, sir.
So just, just to reference what, what May referenced too, and, and it, it really solidifies why you need better communication and that communication comes from the process of having permit. If you look at this poster on, on, on your left, those, those speakers that are size of a billboard, that was classified as a car show, a, a car event. And so we come to find out, I'll make reference to this right here. The speakers that are the size of billboards, that was a car event. And, and all this noise on Saturday, Sunday that the people were, were experiencing. So it turns out it wasn't a car event. It was a noise event and purpose was to make as much noise and as who can get the loudest bang for their buck out of their speaker. But the town didn't know that. The residents didn't know that. And that's what they've been exposed to with. And, and we talked about this with the team, with the event planner, with the Girdas and with Mike, that, you know, people need to know what's going on. And the only way they, they get to know what's going on, we know, then we can pass it on to, to you folks again. Their success is our success. And, and to have coordinating events that work, work for everyone. So, thank you.
My name is Bruce Johoda. This racetrack has been in my life, my whole life, started with my dad. And, you know, I'm sitting here listening to everybody. And I believe you four gentlemen, all for us, to keep the fairgrounds, to keep the racing. I do believe. My question is, how about the next group? That may not be with us. If you guys are with us, don't change codes to make it easy for other people to be against us. Because without those codes, you know, and I know, there's no racetrack, there's no fairgrounds. Someone gets a hair up their butt on the board, not you guys, new people. Well, guess what? They got it already in their hand. No noise, no mass gatherings. Where, where do we go? What do we have? Nothing. We're going to be honest. Let's be honest. Do I agree with you for the communication part? Guaranteed. Let me tell you something. In the sixties and seventies, even to the eighties, I'm showing my age unfortunately. You couldn't put your ass in a seat at Orange County to watch a race, to park a car. Did they have permits? Did they have noise ordinances? No. Let me tell you something. I can remember leaving as a kid, three o'clock in the morning because the races were going on. And I do know that the track people have worked very hard to try to get racing done by twelve o'clock. Does it happen all the time? Once in a blue moon, no. I hear people about Sundays and I can respect that. You do something with a Sunday, you just ruin these. You do something with a Sunday, you just ruin Eastern States Week and you just said how great it was. Sunday's parties in states. Why it's so hard to have permits? They deal with dirt racing, they deal with Deo, they deal with different entities. Rainouts happening. You want to bring in the World Outlaw Sprint Cars for night shows like they used to have here. We don't know when a makeup date could be because we got to go by their calendar. It might not fit into the timeframe of you giving us a permit. I don't think we need a permit. If we're, if we're true to each other, talk to each other, communicate, hey guys, two weeks we have this schedule, we're taking 20,000 people. Well, what do you need? Why do we have to complicate? That's the life of today. Everybody has to complicate everything. What happened to the old days, man? A handshake, talking to each other, that's all we needed. As long as you were man of your word, you're reliable, then you know what, go make them pay the consequences. You know, like I said, I know there's burnouts there now, all kinds of stuff at the fairgrounds. And unfortunately, I'm here just for race cars. And if you want to be honest about this, I think this really came about because when the burnout started, because there's a lot of problems there. So, I mean, if that's the case, be truthful and say it. Whoever the promoter is promoting that, if they're giving you the problem, go flying the hell out of them. Maybe they'll straighten it out. But why do you have to group us all in? What do we do with race cars? We've been there 105 years, you've never had a problem. Again, go back to the sixties and seventies. You guys weren't the board. They never had these problems. The place was packed with people. I remember the kid in the fairgrounds, you were shoulder to shoulder with so many people. Today, we're lucky to get a third of the grandstands filled. How the hell could you have problems with that? So it ain't the race cars, it ain't the fairgrounds.
You're absolutely right about that.
Okay?
And we all agree.
Let's all be straight on you.
But we all agree with that, stated that.
But, but you're trying to lump it all together, sir. Your codes lump it all together. If that's the problem, go address that problem. Don't lump it together. That's the problem in this world. Why you have to take it out on everybody? Understood. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
And one more on Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, we got one person on Zoom. Are they coming?
Where you go?
Yeah.
There we go.
And are they coming? Are they going to speak?
Yes, some.
All right, then we're going to go on with the audience. State your name.
My name is Stiles Snajack. And I live quite a ways away from the fairgrounds. But I've always been able to hear them. And it doesn't bother me. I mean, I'm not a fairgrounds person. But I came here to listen, to see what was, what people had to say. I was alerted the other day that there was a discussion about fairgrounds. And it just, it seems to me that one of the issues that this isn't 50 years ago. And lots and lots of people have moved into the area. And the people have different points of view of what good living is about. And we have placed our fairgrounds for whatever purpose in the middle and built up around it. And I see that it's become a greater issue when you talk about safety, you talk about needing police, you invite people, 10,000 people from areas that apparently have better communication than you do in the area right here. I, I don't know what, if, if it doesn't, it sounds like part of the problem is the location of our fairgrounds and the accessibility of our fairgrounds and the number of people who are now concerned. I mean, there's some people who want a quiet Sunday. And they may be more of them now than they were 50 years ago. And it seems like it, it's come to the point where it's maybe something that just the town of Walk Hill can't deal with. That it needs assistance from the larger community of county or state or something to keep the fairgrounds going at where you have it. I know. I mean, and this is the story. That's exactly my point. There are lots more people and there are lots, it's lots more confusion. And you really need to have an organized communication system. I, I mean, I, I can see that permits might help, but permits have to deal with a lot of different things at this point that you didn't deal with 50 years ago. So that's just my point. I'm looking at it from a larger perspective. It's not that anybody hates the fairgrounds. It's how do you keep the fairgrounds and still live as civilized people around it? That's basically what I'm saying. And thank you for taking on that problem.
Thank you, ma'am. When the permits come in, you know, these events, you know, are not often, we haven't. We get the permits, we contact our partners in law enforcement, whether it's the state or its county sheriffs. And they help us. That's why we want to know what's going on at the fairgrounds so that we can contact our partners and who might help us to get these events in. So that's one of the reasons why we, you know, I stressed it enough about communication and that's why I believe the permits will work. If you know you're having these events, let us, let us know and it has to happen. Sir.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Neil Winter. I live in the village of Warwick. In the interest of full disclosure, like many in this room, I have been attending races since I was three years old. And I did live here in the town of Walk Hill for seven years during the 1990s. So very familiar with the concerts and everything that went on during that time. My comments really this evening are, well, first to thank the board for leaving this public hearing open. And hopefully they will continue to leave it open after tonight from having heard what you hear tonight. I would offer the following in the spirit of cooperation. And this is directed at the Speedway owners and it's also directed at you, the town board. We have an opportunity to learn. Before you make any decisions, I would encourage you to maybe reach out to others that have a similar experience. And I'll, as I said, I've been attending races here, but all over the Northeast for my entire childhood and adult life. And there's one in particular that I can, that I can think of where we have an opportunity. Maybe you folks can reach out to them. Maybe the, the fairgrounds can reach out to them. And that's Port Royal Speedway in Pennsylvania. Port Royal is a location where their racetrack is in the middle of town. When you look beyond the backstretch, there's residential housing. It's the street and housing. They have found a way to host a Juniata County Fair there and events that I would argue are probably larger than any event we've ever held at the Speedway here in terms of a racing event. They seem to coexist. They seem to find a way to do it, right? I do not know what the noise ordinance are. I know they don't have a mass assembly ordinance. But again, I would encourage the Speedway owners to connect with them. You folks connect with the municipal leaders in Port Royal. Learn how they can work, how they've worked cooperatively together. And maybe we can, in the spirit of cooperation, find a resolution that works. So thank you very much.
Okay, sir. Step right up. State your name, please.
Gentlemen, my name is Tawky Valison. A little information about myself. I have been the special event coordinator at the Orange County, Orange County Fair Speedway for the last six years under Chris Larson. Worked directly for Chris, did all the concerts there, did the Toby Keith concert, I've done the rodeos, Jason Aldean. All the special events that are there, including the car shows. Car shows are definitely me. Mr. Larson has stepped back for whatever reasons. And I'm continually doing my events at the Speedway to help the Gerda family and the Speedway stay open. It's very difficult to stay open with the racing as just a one-show kind of deal. With the influx of, let's say, revenue that I can bring with my events to the Speedway, it allows it to continue the legacy of the Gerda family and it allows to continue the, you know, the, the the racing and everything else that goes on there that everybody else is, is here for tonight. I can't promise you that I'm not going to have noise. I can't promise you that we're not going to have people. 10,000 people on the property is keeping the place open and that keeps the place open for not only the car shows, it keeps the place open for the races. I'm a huge advocate of the Speedway and one day I aspire to own it. And that's the truth. And I'm trying to get investors now to do that. If that works out, I'm just a blue collar guy. I go to work every day, put my shoes on just like everybody else, but I love the place. I didn't love the place when I started there, but I love the place now only because of the community and the outreach and really meeting the people like Doug Delgarian and Brett Hearn and Joanne Maxwell and the people that are entrenched in this place for the last 30 years. I'm kind of new here. But I want the place to stay open. I believe I've given you guys our schedule. I have met personally with you guys a couple of times. I don't own the Speedway, so I'm more on the promoter side. Leave you guys have the schedule of events. I am happy to work with you directly on anything that I am doing now and in the future to ease the town's pain on whether the traffic or whatever that is, to help everybody stay safe. Right? That, that's what I'm here for. I'm a promoter and like you guys saying, like you said, Mr. Serrano, when we met the first time, my success is the town's success. So me, the burnout guy, if anybody don't know it, I'm, I'm the guy. But I'm also the guy that some people call the problem. And that's okay. I got big shoulders. I am maybe a part of the problem to some people, but I'm also a huge part of the solution. Like, you know, without the money that we have influx, you know, Chris kind of stepped in in 2017 because the Gerda family was struggling and they were talking about maybe closing. You know, my boss happens to be a philanthropist, you know, he likes to put his money and keep a legacy. He has memories there of when his father took him as a kid, just like all the people in this room have been going there their whole life. I can't say that, but I've grown to love the place. And again, I'm here to help. I'm not here to hurt. So anything I can do personally, you guys have my number. You're more than welcome to call me at any time. Any event that I add or subtract from the equation that you guys already have that schedule, I'm happy to help. And I, I kind of agree with everybody else. By putting a permitting process in place, it gives not only you, but it gives your, you know, future constituents the ability to say no. You can't have that event this weekend. And if you're going to make 50,000 or 100,000, too bad. And, and I don't, I don't agree with that. So again, I appreciate your time, all of yous. And you guys have my number. Please feel free to call me anytime. I want to be, I, I want to help. I'm not here to hurt in any way, shape or form. And, and I appreciate your time and thank you everybody for coming out.
Just a couple of thoughts. This is, this is a public hearing. Excuse me. Oh wait. This, this is a public hearing for the purpose of hearing from the public based on the laws and that we have proposed. And so it's never set in concrete and I have to give Mr. Johoda a lot of credit because he, he said it the best in suggesting a different alternative to what we have present. And so we take everybody back. I have notes and we look at, you know, do we need to change this? Is it, is it, is it set the way, is it good the way it's set? If it's not, we change it. But it's based on productive and logical feedback from you folks. And, and I appreciate your comments because they, they made a lot of sense. Because this is not about the Speedway. This is not about the fair, about the events that have been going on. And, and Tom, I, I, we all do respect, you know, you, you offer, you know, communication and, and you're here to help. I've said this to you in meetings. We've had meetings, Doug was there. And I've said, we talked about this the last time. We talked about this. Why do we keep repeating the same topic and saying, I just, I, I just want to say that we have presented to you the issues and concerns that we had with the events and, and suggested certain things. It's not back and forth. I, I just want to say that, that we have reached out to you several times and, and some things just don't seem to change. It just continued. So, but that being said, well, we're still here. We're open to communication. Hopefully with, with what you see here, we can move forward and, and be more productive and be more adjacent to what, what everyone is saying and the concerns that people have expressed for those events. Not the race events and not the fair event. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone put their hand up? I see someone waving their hand. You, Tara, please?
I did.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Adam.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I am Sandy Miller. I have been attending Orange County Fair Speedway for over 30 years. My son has raced there and it's our family fun place. And it's very upsetting to all of us that we can no longer go there to play every weekend. And so many of us that have found favorites like Brett Hearn, Jeff Hessler, and the excitement that it brings and the clean environment and learning for our children as far as competition, respect for others, business ventures. This is something that's very concerning to all of us racers and we want to race there. And we appreciate you having this meeting. I'm sorry that I'm not there. But I do want to say, hey, to Brett Hearn and Doug and for all that are participating and trying to keep our favorite race place open. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. On the audience?
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Walton and I am a resident of Walk Hill Living Center. I'm also a caster in the area of Middletown. When you look at those big speakers and you hear them and you're awakened at seven o'clock on a Sunday morning, it's not about wanting to about Sunday service. When I am trying to get in my zone on a Sunday morning to do a church service, but there is other residents who are elderly and they're trying to rest. They have medical issues. We've gotten used to, I live on the ground floor and my windows face the property of the raceway and I've gotten used to the noise. I keep my windows closed so I can hear my TV. I'm used to it. I've been there for seven years. So it's not an issue for me. But when you're looking at those sized speakers and you hear that at seven o'clock in the morning, that is an issue. And then it's going until way, way late at night, that becomes an issue. So I have been heard from the board that you all are trying to shut down the raceway. Everyone keeps talking about trying to shut it down. That's not what I'm hearing. But I'm hearing that you all are trying to control the noise, trying to control things that are going on over there. So I am in favor of a noise ordinance because I don't want to hear, those, those aren't even boom boxes that we grew up with when I was growing up. That is ridiculous to hear that at seven o'clock in the morning at the ages of The ages of, um, fifty-five plus in the Walk Hill Living Center. Where we have elderly who are, um, trying to rest, um, and that is just uncalled for. Thank you.
Yeah, anyone else before I give you a second time, Tom, is anyone else that wants to come up and speak before someone, uh, before?
Hi, uh, Colonel Town, uh, Town Resident for almost twenty years. So I just wanted to echo what the, uh, young lady here has to say. Um, everybody wants to keep the fair grounds open, everybody wants to have events, you guys do, everybody here does. Um, permits, but there's, I don't know how many business owners in town. I've been here for, again, twenty years, business owner wants to do something that requires a permit, they put on a permit. They don't put up a sign and wait for one of you to drive by to say, oh, hey, we should stop in here and see if they need a permit. That's ludicrous, okay? Nobody's above the law. Everybody, if, if there's no cooperation. That's on the business owner, in my opinion. We didn't elect you guys to go around looking for problems in the area. We'd like you guys to represent the town for the best interest of the residents of the town. It's up to the business owner to open communications with you, not you to open communications with them, in my opinion. They need open communication with you if there's a problem with the ordinance that you're proposing. And if the communication is there, the ordinance is needed. But obviously that's not the case here. So being in business for forty years myself. If you aren't gonna have to communicate and abide by the unwritten rules. Then the only alternative a board has is to make written rules. That's pretty common sense to me. So noise ordinance, yeah, seven AM, come on, on a Sunday, if any folks here. That live in the area, lived in that area and was wakened at seven AM by this until one AM in the morning. I'm pretty sure they'd be on the other side of the, the scheduling point right now, like these folks here are. That's just ridiculous. And to leave it unchecked, that there's communication from them to you about these things, to leave it unchecked. This is what's gonna happen. So if the communication doesn't come from the business owner, I don't see how you guys have any other choice than to do what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Okay, anyone on Zoom? Let him, he's gotta raise someone, I can't see him.
He's unmuted, he's unmuted.
Alright, unmuted, let him know.
He is.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and.
Hi, um, Michael Gerda here. Um, I'm one of the principal majority owners of the Orange County Fair. Uh, first of all, I, I seriously am apologizing for not being there. I'm at a, uh, a major function that has been on the schedule for a year. So the, the, the last thing in the world I would ever wanna do is have a problem with the town. I, I feel like for, I've been. Third generation operating the Orange County Fair and the property for thirty-five years now. And at the end of the day, I've had a phenomenal relationship with the town. Up until recently. Um, I, I know that, uh, we had an event in the spring that was a little overwhelming. Uh, we got caught by surprise by the attendance. I don't understand exactly why we were as successful as we were. I apologize for being successful, uh, but we did get, we got a surprise. Uh, since then, George, I think I've been in your office six times. To say there's been no communication. And Eric, I believe you were there too. Uh, to say there's been no communication, I thought that we were moving forward. In having successful fair, successful events at the fair, like I've had in the past. Um, but obviously that's not the case. Um, in thirty-five years.
No, we don't, no, it's still. I saw him muted. He's still there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, how about now? Okay, thank you. So I've, I've now, I've now received violations in something that's in law that we're exempt for. And three weeks later, you guys hold a, a public meeting and I get notified two hours prior to. To, to make your violations right, like it, this, this isn't how a board or a government. Works with a member of the community, in my opinion. Um, and not for nothing. Yes, I did have a warehouse deal. I'm trying to survive, keep the property alive. I've reorganized a little bit. I've heard it six times tonight that we've sold to warehousing. Well, I absolutely wanna sell to warehousing when I have my own personal, my own private government or own. Local government that's against me trying to implement laws to impede my business. Why, why would I wanna stay in the town of Walk Hill? When you clearly don't want us there. And as far as trying to play it in a manner. That I'm trying to sell out, I don't wanna sell out. I've been doing this for thirty-five years. There's nothing that has taken my life over. My family's life for generations than to try to keep the Speedway alive, keep the fair alive. And if, if anybody knows me, they know that my number one goal in life is to survive as a property, to pay my taxes. To keep my help that has been with me for forty years plus. That they've, actually I have employees that have been there longer than I've been employed there at thirty-five years. Um, to, to, to say that I just wanna sell out, that's not the case. But I do wanna sell out when I feel that I have my own local government operating against me. And, and for me to have to ask permission at an event facility, every single time I open my doors. Is, is just unreasonable. It doesn't mean we can't have a conversation, it doesn't mean we can't submit our schedule, which. We had a conversation early spring that we would talk every single Tuesday. And send an email out to say what's going on, in addition to putting this on my county permit and notify Orange County. Uh, Department of, uh, Emergency Services, the Fire Department, I mean. Good Lord, the, the Fire Department actually comes to every single one of our burnout competitions. Like, obviously we have community support. I definitely was not in favor of a couple of the shows that we rented to the spring or operated in the spring. But those events are what pay the bills for us to be able to host stock car races. So we've reorganized a little bit, we're not doing anything differently. Except for the fact that we've changed some of the dates of some of our shows and I feel like we're being punished for being successful. And for us to be successful, I feel that the town should be successful at the same time with the hotels and the restaurants. And so on and so forth. Um, you know, I, I, I feel like any, anything that gets passed as a law at this point. Is, is just a burden on the property and we can't comply with. And if that's the case, then maybe we need to do something else with it, but I would love to be able to continue to operate. The event and, or every event that we do and the facility in the manner that we do and just have an open line of communication. I mean, I, I can't think of, you guys are trying to implement a law that says we have to stop at ten fifty or eleven fifty-nine. I, I don't know the last time we did anything past eleven fifty-nine. If you wanna say that, don't do something at seven AM. I don't feel like I did something at seven AM, but that's a conversation, it doesn't need to be a law. I just think that we need to work together, have more meetings, we've had a few, but not much has come out of it. And hopefully we can work together in the future and everybody on the board voted, votes every one of these laws down. And we do a little reboot and I would like to continue to operate this place, doing events. That's what the place is designed to do. And I thank you guys for your time.
Sure, thank you, Mike.
All right, Eric, just thank you, Mike, for, for your comments, just some corrections there. I, I never said there was no communication. What I actually said was that there has been communication in several meetings. And it didn't seem like things were moving forward and, and the promises that were made weren't being delivered. Or, or to the extent that it, it made the positive impact that was expected and we came back. And we had the same discussions. That's, that's what I said, I never said there was no communication. I said there was, but there was no progress in that communication. Um, as far as the other statement that you made that you're selling the fairground because of all this. That's just not completely true because you, your deal with the warehouse has been going on for at least two years, way before. Any of these last few months has been, um, the issue. So the, that, that correction I just wanted to make from your statement. Thanks again.
And the proof of that is that when we put on the moratorium, we were accused of trying to prevent the sale. Of the fairgrounds by putting on the moratorium, even though it didn't apply to the fairgrounds, but.
Right, and that, that there's a, there's a statement from the Orange County Chamber of Commerce, I won't read the whole thing, but the statement here says for almost two years. Um, to, to Mr. Coin's reference, for almost two years, a proposed sale of property has been delayed. Due to a six-month moratorium on warehouse construction and installation in the town of Walk Hill. And, and that for almost two years, that, that's way before any of this was suggested. Again, um, we're not trying to shut down the fairground, we're not trying to shut down racing or anything else. We just want some kind of, of, when, when the residents express a concern, express. An issue with this kind of stuff, it needs to be heard and addressed. Simple as that. Thank you.
My name is Mike Arto.
At the moment?
Well, good, Mike, thank you.
Okay, my name is Mike Arto and I live on Woodlawn Avenue. If you give you guys a reference to where I lived in the fairgrounds. I literally can walk up to Wizard Avenue, look right down the road and I see the place. I worked there from when I was about fourteen years of age, maybe in my twenties. I've seen the town grow. And I understand, you know, things like these come in here, but they may not even be here next year, may not even be back again. So why do we need a town ordinance for, you know, guarding, you know, noise? You know, remember way when I was little, the monster trucks came in here the first time. People were calling nine-one-one, wondering what this big monster engine sound was in the middle of the night. Tracy Baxter, when he used to use Cable Six, did a whole report on it, saying about that, why, you know, what this big noise was. Overexaggeration, people were like, oh my God. So again. Seeing that, you know, decimal the amount of hundred, one, hundred and one, you could probably get that at the racetrack now. My father, when he was growing up, was asked, you know, by somebody a long time ago before he passed away, he told me. He said, somebody came up to him and asked him, how is it that, you know, you can live by the fairgrounds with all that noise? He said to him, what noise? Got on the truth, folks, got on the truth. Why? Because the engines at the time weren't making that noise. But what also was helping was we had trees, we had buffers. City of Melton, the City of Melton School District, Mechanics Down Elementary School, now it's Carter. Was but, you know, was going back behind their own property, tearing down all those trees. So that buffer that we all had is now gone. We don't have those buffers anymore. Even Carpenter Avenue, there was trees and stuff, gone. So again, you're, you're chasing after a problem that's, that's, you know, pretty much gonna be here for the rest of your lives. I mean, I hear the construction. From the, what they're doing over at the, at the middle school. And that's up on Gardner Avenue, not Gardner, excuse me, up by, uh, Gar, uh, Grand Avenue. I can hear them. So should I call you guys up and say, hey, I have a complaint that the City of Melton's doing all that? During normal daytime. I mean, I'd like to go out and enjoy myself on a nice day on Monday through Friday if I could. So should I call you guys and complain to the City of Melton about that? Like I said, you also talk about permits for, you know, big events. Where was this town of Walk Hill last year? When the City of Melton had the track event at the school? There was no town of Walk Hill cops, there was no county sheriffs. Hell, there was no even the state, state police out there directing traffic on Wizard Avenue. The only person out there was a City of Melton School District employee trying to direct traffic. No notices were given to us about this big event that they had. But you want to talk about the, the fairgrounds, about them having some effect. Why don't you come and ask me what I have a problem with? I literally, like I said, I can literally roll out my door and walk right down to the fairgrounds. And I literally, I understand this may have gotten out of hand, but it's not an everyday occurrence. It's a once in a blue moon that they're there. When's the next time they're gonna be here? And what, and you, and you wanna answer that question? I'm asking you guys, cause you're the ones that say you need, you need to know in advance.
We don't know and that's what part of this is about.
Uh, there is a thing called the internet. I, I can tell you right now, Diesel, people will be here in, in November. So, so you're gonna say that you don't know about that one? I'm, I'm asking the question, they, they, they have it on their website. I've actually, cause like I said, I do DoorDash. And I was trying to find out when they'll be back here. And it says right on their site, they'll be back again. There is a date. I told you, you go on Diesel Mechan, Diesel Trucks, whatever was that young lady that was up here earlier that said about that.
Okay, we're not gonna go back and forth, I understand your concern, please.
I have given you my concern, but you were saying about, you know, not into being notified of anything or anything else and your gentleman over, your councilman over here just said, what, what's the date? I'm telling you, there, there is.
That's proof that there's notification, that, that there is no notification, there's no formal notification to the town. To the resources that are needed to manage those.
But then if you're saying that, then, then, that's what I'm saying, but the City of Melton. Had the school district, like you said, had a track meet last year that screwed up everything and also the graduation. Do they notify you? Does it have any statements?
You want me to spend my time on the internet looking for events in the fairgrounds, is that what you're saying?
I'm asking.
No, no, I'm just curious, you said it's on the internet. So, I, I'm just curious. Is, is that what you're telling me, that I should spend my time on the internet to look for these events?
With all due respect, Mr. Serrano.
And you're saying I should go onto the internet and look at these events? Yes or no?
Yes, because like I said.
I disagree with you and that's okay.
Okay, so then, then, then what about the City of Melton having their graduation and also they had a track meet there last year? City of, town of Walk Hill, you guys went out and put cones out on, on some streets, saying no parking. But nothing was ever told to us what the game plan was. Because like you said, there was talk about a case of an emergency.
You're comparing a school event to that?
You're saying about an event, you're just talking about events in general. Because like you said, the school district has how many kids graduating every year? And they had a track meet, sir. That's what I'm getting at.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone on Zoom?
How you doing? Uh, my name's Ace Wood. I'm a, I drive trucks for a living. I also work at the fairgrounds. I work every event that goes on there, whether it's racing, motocross, diesels, car show. I work them all. Diesel shows, yeah, they've gotten, they were out of control sometimes. That's something that Tommy and everybody needs to work on. I agree with that. But to get off of that permit thing a little bit here. Uh, I just wanna make, uh, talk about what Michael said. About, he said he did have offers for warehouses. And, uh, you guys keep saying that you want the fair to stay. You, you, you know, you don't want that property to go away. And he said that he would rather have property not go away as well. Everybody here, they're all here because they don't want the fairgrounds to go away, they don't want the races to go away, they don't want none of it to go away. So my question is, say Michael decides not to sell the property. You guys wanted to stay, right? Right? You guys wanted to stay? Is the town willing to work with him, whether it be tax breaks, whatever, to keep the property, help the town work to him to keep the property going? Or say he decides to sell it, say Tommy buys the property. And keep the same events going. Is the town willing to work with the new owner? To help keep the property going so it doesn't go away, whether it be tax breaks or whatever, grants, whatever, to help keep the property going. Is the town willing to do that? Whether it be tax breaks or whatever, grants, whatever, to help keep the property going. Is the town willing to do that?
That's a conversation that need to be had, and then everybody else is gonna want tax breaks, everyone who owns the property.
Well, we already do that. We do that for warehouses being built. We do that for apartment houses being built.
Okay, that that's incorrect.
You you don't give no tax breaks.
No, no, not for residential.
No, what about for commercial?
Some, but not warehouses.
Oh, still, you give tax breaks. You're not. You you give tax breaks to certain businesses.
Yes.
Okay, this is a business that's trying to survive.
Okay.
Is the town willing?
I'm having trouble surviving. Can I get a tax break? Like, what are you talking about, man? You you hear it? You hear yourself? Yeah.
You just said you give tax breaks to a, you're not a business. This is a business. You give tax breaks to business, right? All all I'm saying is you guys keep saying you do not want the fair to go away. You want the fair here. As everyone else here wants the races here, they want the fair here. If whether they keep it or someone else comes in that wants to continue that, is the town willing to work with them to help them keep it going because it's a hard business to keep going with taxes and all the other costs. As a business that doesn't bring in a lot of money, right? Right or wrong?
I don't know the financial. You said businesses don't bring a lot of money. I don't know that.
Dirt racing does not bring in a lot of business.
I do not know that. That's what you're saying. I do not know that.
Okay, well, maybe you should come to a race and support your track.
It's safe to say.
The track, and you see that attendance is way down. It doesn't bring in attendance. Tommy's show is bringing a lot of attendance. I will tell you that. And he has definitely brought in a lot of money to the track. And then it's helped the track. And like I said before, there does need to be some working on traffic and all that. I agree with that. All I wanna know is if someone wants to keep that property going, doing what it is now, is the town willing to work with them to help them keep the track going?
Mr. Woods, it's safe to say that the town, like eh with any other business, is always willing and to work with that business to make them work and and help them survive within our legal eh limitations. We're not, you we can't say, oh, we're gonna give you a a tax break. That's that's, we can't say that. So eh does a business wanna come in and talk and say, hey, this is what we wanna do, eh what are o- opportunities for grants or whatever? Yeah, we can willing eh, we're willing to help them find those grants if they're out there, we're willing to to see, but we can't make promises we can't keep.
I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you to make, I'm saying, is that something that you would be willing to talk, you know, work with someone else? Both sides work together to try and come to.
I answered, I think I answered it, but we're technically off the topic of of what this is supposed to be.
And I said to get off for a topic of the, I'm I'm getting on a topic of trying to help keep the property going.
And and just out of courtesy and respect to the people that are behind waiting, you know, if if you made your statements to that, you know, you have to give them a chance to speak as well.
So basically, no, thank you.
That's not true, but.
Hi, my name is Joanne Maxwell. I uh I'm the part of the Maxwell family. We own the thirty-first lap. We do the concessions at the fairgrounds. And I, for one, am very happy that I'm here tonight because it's been very informative for me to know what all is going on. I've been at the track since five years old. I have family. My family were racers. I, you know, now that I've been there, I employ, we have employed, our comp- our family business has employed thousands of kids over the years. I'm happy to say I'm probably one of the few businesses that still hires your fourteen, fifteen-year-olds and teaches them how to count back change. It's it's important, right? And I also have to say, I know behind me because of these spaces, that most of these people are here because the love of racing. And that's what they're concerned about. And as you pointed out, this is not about, no one is trying to take the racetrack away. I personally am very thankful to Doug and Brett for trying to bring us back racing. We've struggled. Chris Larson, as RJ said, you know, he came in and we had really high hopes, and we thought that he was gonna be the one who was gonna bring it back. And unfortunately, he's not with us, but now we're trying to survive. So now we have Tommy. Tommy is bringing in some, you know, very big shows. I also understand some of the residents with your concerns. Because I have to say, as working that event, that there was a couple of events that we were taken by surprise. We didn't know. So I can only imagine the residents and the towns. Um social media, as we've seen, is extremely powerful. So whatever Tommy's doing, I wish that we could have the Orange County Fairgrounds and the races be able to get that support. Because if we could, if if we could have kept that support with the races, then maybe we wouldn't be here today, right? So anyway, I just wanna say that um I just hope that we can open up the lines of communications. That show, I get it. I can tell you, we ran out of food. We had no idea that many people were gonna show up. Tommy didn't know how that many people were gonna show up. It was just seven AM on a Sunday? No. I don't wanna even be there at seven AM on a Sunday. It's too, it's it, you know, but again, to change what has been for so many years and that we have something right here in the town of Walker that so many people do love and the passion of racing, that's what we wanna bring back. And I just hope that all this permitting and changing laws and all this, that we can come to some resolution so we can bring the fairgrounds back and I can keep employing kids and teaching them how to make change and say please and thank you to people because I personally don't like going up to a terminal and having to order and then asking me for a tip when you didn't do anything. So, you know, let's um, I hope we can just all work along and thank you. And I really appreciate. And I have to say, I miss so many of these people at my bar and and we just want to get back to what we had, and I think that's what we're all kinda holding on to. My father-in-law, Bob Maxwell, he was the fair manager, and that's when we had the four H, and it was a fair. And now it's changed. And I also wanna say that I am a realtor. I'm also selling many houses to people who are coming into our area. They're coming up from the city and they're not used to this. This has been here and they're coming into our area. So I just hope that we can all work together and that I get to see all these beautiful faces back in our bar, having a beer together, watching the racetrack and looking forward to the upcoming race August fourth. So hope to see you all.
Hi, my name is Pam By. I'm one of the employees that they have that's been there for fifty years. I started working there when I was fourteen. I'm seventy-one years old now. Thank God I have great health. And I actually enjoy every show. I work every show. And when the boom boxes came, I enjoyed it. When the trucks came, I enjoyed it because I enjoy diversity. I think that that's one of the issues that people always have. Accepting other people and the crazy things that they do, you have to just learn to enjoy everything about what you're dealing with. Um the comradeship that these guys bring, you don't see anymore. They come, they hang out in the, they hang out in the bar, like she was saying. They hang out within, you know, in the racetrack. They just have fun. And they're young people. I don't know what they're doing in the streets. I'm not there. I'm literally inside. And when they come in there, it's yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Um the noise doesn't bother me. I, you know, I have children, so noise doesn't bother me. And I have the ability to just point it out. I understand that people were upset. But I think if they came down and saw the fun that the young people were having without hurting anything, they would have a more of appreciation for it. I thank you guys for everything that you're doing, you're trying to do. And my only takeaway, well, my biggest takeaway is if you get ample notice, then you will probably pass the permit, correct? If if you get ample notice. And we're thinking, you know, if you if you need a month, then communicate with the guys. Listen, I need a month. If you need two months, because you really can't dictate the crowd you're getting. The first round, we had a ton of people. The second round was minimal. So you just can't dictate that in a turn. We do what we can, you know, to make everybody comfortable there, do anything that we can to to try to provide a good service that we're, that you guys were used to having. So if we give ample service, hopefully, I mean, ample notification, hopefully it'll work out. And I thank you for your time.
Miss Fox, thank you for your remarks, but I still can't get past the seventy-one.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening, everyone. My name is John E. Bonde Gennaro. I'm from Monticello, Connecticut. I'm a blogger. I'm a journalist for the Racing Times. I blog for the Orange County Fair Speedway, the Bethel Speedway, the Accord Speedway. And I'm here as an admin for the Facebook group. Please save our historic New York Orange County Fair. I appreciate that you came out tonight and clarified what your stance is on the fairgrounds. And the issue tonight was supposed to be the exemption of the fairgrounds from the noise ordinance. Uh it seems to me from what I've heard tonight, um uh due to some circumstances beyond our control at the time, that they, this may have been a shoot-from-the-hip type of deal. And in that respect, uh I would ask that the board table any action on this ordinance change tonight. At least until we could get further clarification and um uh come up with something better. Now, you did also ask for um opinions or suggestions. And from what I know from dealing with this type of thing from other town councils, uh to begin with, I know that in Connecticut, these zoning laws are from ten PM to eight PM, uh eight AM on a weekday. On a Sunday, it's the opposite. It's ten AM on a Sunday until eight PM Sunday. Now, that may not fit in this in this situation. It's just a suggestion. However, I think maybe what might help is a liaison between the promoters and the board. We really need to coalesce this. I think we should create perhaps a four to six-week notification so that everybody knows what's gonna happen, how it's going to happen. And I think we also need to create or rather divest the Speedway and the fair from what I would term special events. And I think that may be a road forward as to how we can get a handle on this. Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Do we have to go on to the other public hearing? Okay. Um. My intentions today was to take these resolutions. So that was my intention. So that's what I'm gonna do. I know we got correspondents next. Um, do we have any correspondents besides the one we already read?
About this, about the.
I'll learn. Yeah, we gotta close the public hearing.
My suggestion, Mr. Supervisor, would be to close the public hearings for oral comment, but leave it open for written comment for ten days.
Okay.
Question, is that a separate public hearing or a master plan review?
Uh master plan, you can come in afterward and discuss that. Um. Yes. When we finish it, the public hearing for the master plan is open in the. So I make a motion, I make a I make a motion to close both public hearing in regards to the noise ordinance and uh the public assembly, mass public assembly, um our time fairgrounds. And leave it open for ten days for written comments.
Written comments can be submitted to the office of the town clerk by email, which is on the website or they can be mailed in or dropped off, whatever is easier for people. In a second, in a second.
All a favor?
Bye.
Bye. Thank you. Next, um we have public participation and agenda items. So whatever we have on the agenda, you can come up and speak. Alrighty. We have nobody left. Alright. I have no idea. Okay, we're gonna proceed. Um. Come on, Mark. So black and white. So in.
Did I try to speak?
Okay, okay. To a great audience that we have, thank you for staying. Appreciate you staying and, um, I, I think that was a pretty good, um, public hearing. I, I actually enjoyed it. Um, next we have, um, I know that we have left in the past our, uh, master plan review and there are people who wanna speak on the master plan. Can we do that before resolutions? Yep, okay, it's, uh, master plan, uh, public hearing that we started a couple of months ago. Okay, okay. Um, it's not on the agenda, so we, but, uh, we can, alright. Yes, okay, so we'll have public participation and you wanna speak on, uh, on the master plan?
Yeah, to give everybody in turn, uh, at least twenty, thirty people.
So.
I, you have one, come up to the mic.
Uh, yeah. On the public hearing, the public hearing ends tonight, like what I give to them.
I, I'm not exactly understand, are you trying to say, everything is still open? Written comments and.
Yes, ma'am.
You could still give the written comments, yes, you could, after today, yes, you could give. So do you wanna speak or you wanna give written comments?
Or both.
Alright, then come right up and speak.
Uh, Jean Schultz, resident for nineteen years, Circleville. Town board member, zoning board of appeals for ten years. What I wanna talk to you about is, um, well, in a general speaking of all that would affect all the areas of Walco, the, um, conservation easements, the, the taking away of the conservation easements. Uh, I see that if we do that, we take away the ability for either businesses or townspeople to leave undeveloped land on. So I see that as a, a, a major problem. I also see, because it's taking out the whole code, I also see that, you know, we have people come in, developers, applicants, and they need to leave land, they need to give parkland, or they need to give money in lieu. I'm not really, I'm not really seeing that, so. Um, I, I'm looking at my code book and, and those are kind of the thoughts that I have, like what is happening there. The other thing is I wanna bring attention just to exit one nineteen, um, where this is the example that I wanna bring to. So, we're starting a new zoning district, it's, um, highway commercial, it's involved. And it uses, um, we now have some mixed use in it. So I was looking in the code book, I found the most applicable is a two-family. With two-family, it requires water and sewer. So it kind of, you know, I kinda looked at it like, hmm, okay, so this is, this is a, you could say a two-family plus, it's like three uses, right? Or it's residential and it's another business use. So I don't think that looks appropriate on. And it's not defined, it's not defined how many people can live in these apartments. It's, it's just not, it doesn't have bulk, it doesn't have bulk tables, it doesn't have the kind of information that you should have to make that kind of decision, instead of just saying, oh, just two apartments, or we're gonna be allowed. Um, on, uh, exit one nineteen, I wrote this to save time. Okay, so, um, our exit, Baker Road, Shore Road, uh, Alpine House, Wolf. And here I am, this giant residential district. It's on both sides, it's Shore Road, and it's all residential. There's nothing mixed in there, it's all residential. And the master plan, uh, committee recommendations are to put commercial in here. The whole place is residential. This is a line dividing residential, a large residential zone, like the, one of the largest R2. But the recommendation is to encroach in there. And I don't understand that. It, it's like chipping away here, we are R2 here, we are R2 with all what comes with R2, whether we're near the exit or we're way down in Circleville. You know, the, the recommendations say, oh, preserving home values, um, not, not getting into residential. Well, you are, or you would be. And that's not a good residence. It would, it would have to, if something was going to move over there, it would have to go through to get a use variance. And, and we're not just talking about like commercial property that may want to go into an adjacent lot for another commercial property. We're talking about residential lots here. Resident, residential lots, okay, so here's Shore Road. Okay. Here's our warehouse, who's in R2, okay, and we're gonna change the lots right around him. Adjacent back here, another lot here. Just in the corner. Just in the corner of that road. So in my experience on zoning, this is not, this is not a procedure. It's only a corner. This is, this is a conforming area of R2. Some, some speaking about, uh, uh, line down a road is not, you know, is not to, to be used, it's not the line, it's the district, the whole R2 district there. So I, I question that.
I believe if I remember correctly, that area is just that, I, I, again, looking at the actual rec, and again, like we said before, these are recommendations. You made it sound like these are set in stone.
No, I'm actually addressing the board and I also have a copy for the, uh, master plan review committee. As a matter of fact, I put an extra copy of the, the one that you had, that you brought into the record on the, on the other, uh, the first meeting. It, were they reviewed? I mean, I got flack on it, but I, I wasn't told if you guys actually looked at the con, content of those adverse impacts I put on there. It was given to Eric?
About the bald eagle that was spotted one day or something.
And, and you know, if it was a bald eagle, why would that be a problem? That's.
You know what, you know what, I, I, listen, we've been through this before, Jean.
No, we have not, and I don't wanna go into that about the bald eagles. I wanna speak about what I'm speaking about.
Okay.
Okay, so.
The, the R2, from what I remember, has not been compromised in any way. As a matter of fact, you're, where, where you're pointing is the R2, it doesn't have water and sewer, it's subject to an acre and a half residential lots. And that has not changed. So, um, what you have there, what you showed us there, where, where it's being piecemeal, it's, it, I don't think that's a hundred percent correct.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll take a look at it because it, it is. It is, that's all R2 and slated to be H, highway commercial, right around the warehouse. Right around the warehouse, right on that corner, only a corner. The, um, the bus stop?
The corner there. There's already a warehouse, but is there, was there reason for that?
The reason that you showed me that, that there was a warehouse. So there's no reason to change it. We had two forty-one, two four dash one five, two four dash one five O, one, two, three. But only two, no, didn't change.
And, and why was the change?
Because it was already the same.
Well, it's, it's a proof use in R2.
Well, I, I, I think correctly, if I'm wrong, Steve, I think that the reason is you put that up. Probably the reason for it is to ensure that, that if there's already a warehouse there, you don't wanna build a house next to the warehouse, there's issues there.
I don't want commercial there, look, look, right here, here's my road, boom, there's a lot, okay? Right here is a bus stop. It's a bus stop.
Okay.
Probably like, I don't know, maybe I'd be here.
You're talking about.
And then I would be my commercial.
Yeah, stay, stay with this, Mike.
So we can, we can, it's David recording, so.
That's, that's big safety, that's a big safety issue there.
I know Steve, he would know it, didn't he?
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, but if you have papers, okay?
I appreciate it, thank you.
And like I say, I would have loved if I could get some feedback from the master plan review committee as far as like how they came to find out those properties would be inappropriate use. And I did my research, I found the adverse, you know, impacts from the, the factor, weighing the factors. The majority, if you wanna say all, it's in paper, are negative impacts to that residential community.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I'll give it to Steve and him and, him and Eric, Jean, Stephen is the other.
Yep, uh-huh, yep.
So, so him and Eric will, will hopefully get back when Eric's away, so one of you.
S- Steve, is it on up to two apartments allowed for the, um, mixed use? Yeah, that would, that would, that would be something important, and that's what I mean, the lack of this kind of.
Apartments, is that for the mixed use?
The, the mixed use.
Not, not in the R2.
No, not in R2, in highway commercial.
Okay.
The allowance for highway commercial and we're on, you know, the calculation is, there's no calculation showing. Now, I was told by the lawyer that these things haven't been done yet, but for you guys to be able to make this kind of decision, we don't know how many apartments they can have, there's no infrastructure on Baker Road. It's dangerous, it is dangerous for anybody walking on that road. I'm gonna put some detail on what's happened on that dangerous area there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Who's that?
Carol.
What, let's go, oh, yes, Carol Gill?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, it is Carol Gill, and how are you today? I, I, I just wanted to try to assure Jean that it's currently zoned OR there for a great deal of that area. And OR allows for a hundred foot buildings. So she could have a hundred foot office building there as it's currently zoned. And so transition to highway commercial brings in a much smaller bulk table, and yes, it would, we would be looking at the highway commercial bulk table, so there is a bulk table there. So that was a little bit of confusion or misinformation there. So the highway commercial bulk table is what applies there. We're not, we didn't propose any changes to the bulk table itself. Um, so the master plan review committee's recommendations are a transition to a smaller footprint kind of commercial application versus what's already there. One of the lots in particular there is a split lot. It's the same lot that occurs on both sides of Baker Road. And so it simply makes the highway commercial usage consistent for that particular single property, you know, so. And, and there is a great deal of commercial activity there already. This is not really a residential area at, at the corner of Baker. Um, there are other commercial applications that are already existing, so it actually makes it be more conforming. Um, and I just wanted to add that piece of information, just, you know, I didn't want you to have to wait on that. So I just wanted to, I apologize for, for, um, chiming in, but that was what I wanted.
Really appreciate it, because do you have the, uh, answer on the two apartments? Is it the cap at two apartments or?
That's what we proposed, was two apartments. How that evolves is up to the discretion of the board, but that was what we proposed, yes.
The O and R on the R2 side, you're saying there's, uh, of course with that non-conforming lot that goes under the ground, he's OR, right? But are there any OR at that, that corner there? I don't believe there are.
It's all, everything to the, to the highway side is OR already. It is OR now, you could have hundred foot buildings. And that's allowed in OR, and as a ZBA member.
It's allowed, but the town is on record saying, wow, we believe in a hundred foot.
Bulk table.
I don't wanna, let, you know, focus on it, alright.
The, the bulk table for OR allows for a hundred, a hundred foot buildings. Jean, it's important for you to know that, so.
Yes, I do know that.
Changing from a, a, a zone that allows for a hundred foot building to a zone that allows only a thirty-five foot building, I believe is the bulk table, please don't quote me, you'll have to just check the highway commercial bulk table, is a more conservative usage at that footprint. So, you know, we did try to be very sensitive and, and try to work toward transition. You know, so transitional elements were very important to us. So, you know, hundred foot buildings right next to residential seemed inappropriate, and so this creates a transition, right? There is still some OR there, so it transitions to residential.
Not gonna happen, but those are R2 on that corner, you can't tell me that they're not, there are two of those lots.
And they're commercial though, Jean.
I think, I think this would be best for the next master plan committee meeting.
Well, you know, it would be, it would be nice for somebody to be able to give me these answers.
You just received answers though, Jean, that's, we've been trying, we have talked to you before. And I am gonna shut off my mic and I'm sorry.
There's a disagreement, so on whether it's our residential or not.
So, um, you know, you made the comment about bulk table, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to put my head behind it because I think when a zone is already has its bulk table and, and if the zone is changed to highway commercial, those are the bulk tables they're gonna use. So I was a little confused when you said, well, there's no bulk tables. Yes, they are, each commer, each zone has them. So when, when a zone is changed to another zone, those are the tables they use.
But, but it's a new use, there's residential now. That's, that's what I mean.
So I think it's best that, um, um, Eric Johnson, when he's here, um, like I said, he's not here today, right, be able to give you the answer to that. I believe is no more than two apartments, I don't see, I believe that's what it is.
That's what Carol, that was the cap that.
Carol said, yes.
Thank you, Carol.
Yes, thank you, Carol, I, I appreciate it.
So, you know, for your peace of mind, it makes a lot of sense now in what you showed, showed us. So currently, the, the, the area that you pointed out is zone OR. And in that area, I remember Eric spoke to that, let me, let me finish, that area.
So cut them out.
Please, let me finish. So it's zone OR, office research, and so if, as per what Carol said, those buildings can be as high as a hundred feet, right? Changing it to H, a highway commercial makes them smaller, thirty-five foot is the cap. Now, someone can always go into the zoning board and ask for a zone variance, and it's up to you guys, specifically you and your team, to say, no, this is way zoned and you can't. But, um, and she said that the cap is two apartments. Um, outside of that, uh, they'll follow up with, with, uh, the R2 questioning.
Well, well, it sounds like Carol is maybe saying that R2 is some kind of commercial because I am sure that that corner is R2, it is not OR.
Okay, we know.
So that's a big difference in what we're talking about, I wanna speak to somebody. Okay?
We will, um, I, I, I'd be curious, I will definitely look and, I'll have an answer. Um, and we could go back and forth unless we actually look at the zoning map, we can't really get the answer now, so. Next, next name, you got something else?
No. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. My clerk, do we have any correspondence? Oh, I'm sorry, you wanna come up? Uh, regarding, uh, oh, okay, and can you state your name?
Um, you're talking about the end of Shore Road, right?
She was, yes.
She was, yeah.
She was, okay, so.
Actually, I mean, it depends on, on the beginning, Shore Road and Baker, am I correct?
Right, Shore Road and Baker. So what you're, what you were, what you were trying to figure out is what the, what the zoning is right now and what it's gonna be in the master plan. I understood what Carol was saying. But why, that's just my question. Why, if you have a street that's all residential, why wouldn't you just wanna continue that route to the end of the street? Why would you wanna have something else in there? Why wouldn't you just wanna continue the residential? It's just one lot at the end of Shore Road, right?
Yeah. There's a couple, I think there's one or two, I think one of the reasons, and I can't speak, it's, it's, there's already a commercial warehouse or building.
Across the street.
No, she's talking on the same.
Hang on, hang on, Adrian, so it's, you would access it from, from Baker Road?
Right, but what I, the, while she's talking, oh, it's on Ba, but is it the corner of Baker and Shore? Right, but what I, the, while she's talking, oh, it's on Ba- but is it the corner of Baker and Shore?
Yes, yeah.
So what I'm saying is, it's actua- I'm talk- I'm not talking about the, I'm not talking about the side that's on the highway side. I'm talking about the side, what's the name of that little street, that road?
Orchard Hill.
Orchard Hill, so what you're talking, the end of Orchard Hill. Okay, no, you're just talking the end of Shore.
Not on the right, on the left.
On the.
Yeah, so you.
I'm trying to picture this.
The Orchard Hill dumps out on the Shaw, right?
Right.
Okay, so you, you go to Shaw, you make a right, it comes to that stop sign, and Baker's in front of you.
Yes.
To the left.
So why, what I'm saying is on Shore Road, she was right, it's all residential. Why wouldn't you just wanna continue, why would you wanna have a whole road residential, but not the end block?
I think that the thinking by the master plan review committee was that there's that, what is it, all steel or?
All steel, yeah.
All steel, I sometimes confuse it. That, that property butts up behind that, and that it would just merge into one, basically, um. But again, you know what, these are, these are recommendations.
I was just trying to get a set my mind, because I always thought, you know, like, you know, years ago when we did it before, we tried to clean up a lot of those areas where you had mixed uses in with residential, like over Sarah Lane. So why you would, why you wanna do that, but I was forgetting that that all steel was there.
Yeah, and you know what's funny too, though, like, I, I know, um, the review committee is big on the, not having the, the road be separate, right? Separate the two zones. And, you know, sometimes it, it's silly to have that, sometimes you're like, oh, I get it, you know? So, I think that's where they're coming from as well, but again, these are recommendations, and, you know, we'll see where it goes. It's not, it's not written stone, it's not voted on, it's not debated yet.
Did this situation, I'm just, cuz I, I haven't been involved in the master plan, has this situation happened in other areas of the town where? You know?
A few areas, I. We, we, we gotta, you know, you should get this, the, the, uh, the packet, you, you don't got the pa- you never got the packet?
I haven't been involved in it at all, I got enough of the zoning board.
You should get the packet.
We gotta have some all over there.
You can get you the packet.
Yes, yeah.
I don't, that did you, you should get the packet.
Yeah, I would, but yeah, being on the zoning board, I really should, so. I could go in and get one.
No, let's go get one, because.
No, 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 like, I mean, I'll, I'll do it like in the next couple of days.
Come into my office, we have the packet, we'd be more than happy to get it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay. My clerk, you got correspondence? And not the things that we read already.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we, we're not gonna read those, you ready? Yes.
With respect to the. Public areas, right?
Okay. Next, um, we have resolutions. Um, I make a motion to table eight point one, eight point two, which is the first one, eight point one is a resolution, um, in regards to the exemption to the noise for the Orange County Fairgrounds, I make a motion to table it.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, next resolution, adopting the local law, mending town code, chapter seventy-four, assembly, mass public events exemption, the Orange County Fairgrounds. I make a motion to table, um, this resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, my clerk, next resolution?
Resolution, the town with the town of Walco, adopting local law number, I believe it's five, but I'll have to check that tomorrow. On with two thousand twenty-four, mending section three thirty-three dash seven of the town code to establish a no parking zone on the north side of Enwood Road. Now therefore, be adhered by result, the town of the town of Walco, here by cops, local law number five of two thousand twenty-four, entitled the local law, mending chapter three thirty-three, section seven of the town code, the town of Walco, New York, establishing a no parking zone on the north side of Enwood Road, a copy of which is attached here to and made part of this resolution. And for the result of the town clerk, being as hereby directed to enter said local law in the minutes of this meeting, in the local law book of the town of Walco, to give due notice of the adoption of the local law to the Secretary of State of New York. You have a motion?
Second.
So move.
The second was, I'm sorry.
Mr. Corn.
Councilman Corn.
Mr. Corn?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Vannella?
Yes.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, huh?
You know, we, his pen is the only one that works.
Okay. Next, uh, we have councilman comments, we'll start with, uh, Councilman Corn.
Okay, I'm gonna be brief, be clear, the timeframe here. Alright, so most of July, high rate, uh, most of July, soon by finishing road prep, paving, Seaman Road, St. Andrews Court. Lock Lamont, Acorn Lane, Shagbark, Shagbark Street, and Sarah Lane were all paved this month. Next week, we're hoping to pave Mayor Drive and Mariah Lane. Uh, we'll have some drainage work on Evan Court and Lock Lamont. Once it's complete, we'll schedule those two to pay, to be paved. Um, in the meantime, we're going to get over to, uh, Tarbell Road, seventeen M side, and then start on, uh, Civil Lake Scotttown Road, and discussed this in the past. Um, very, very, uh, busy, it's a, it's a main artery in town. Uh, it's gonna take quite some time, but we're gonna have to mill that and then get back there and pave. Um, we're also gonna start to clean out one of our cold storage buildings, it's a forty by eighty building that houses our bucket truck, equipment and vehicle tires, uh, plow blades and steel for plow and wing units for a larger dump truck. Uh, once we get it out, we're gonna pour new concrete floor because it currently has a dirt floor, so that'll be an upgrade to that building, and that was quick, that was quick, one, one other thing is we've had an issue on Stony Ford Road where Stage Road dumps out onto Stony Ford there, it's a three-way stop. Excuse me. Um. People don't see the stop sign at night. Uh, we got some grant money from our county legislator, Mike Paduke. I wanna thank Mike, uh, for coming through all of this, they're about eleven hundred dollars a piece, so we got five thousand dollars, we're gonna pick up four of these. They're, they're, uh, solar powered, uh, lit stop signs all the way around. Uh, hopefully this will, as the drivers come around that bend, they'll be able to pick up that there is an actual stop sign there, that they should slow down and not wind up on, on the resident's front lawn. Uh, which has happened time and time again over the years, so, again, thank you to, uh, county legislator Paduke for coming through for us on that. Um, I'm not gonna have any comments tonight, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Councilman Corn, Councilman Valentine.
Hello. Um, our parks, um, very quickly, we continue our weekly mowing, but our facility is a long way daily maintenance for the summer camp. Um, in the process of trimming trees and, and in all the wood lines for the facilities for mowing purposes. Um, they've removed the old letter board sign at the Veterans Memorial Park, and they're prepping for site for new digital sign to be installed. Um, they'll be starting and adding four hundred yards of safety servicing as needed in our playgrounds throughout the park. Quickly, our police, currently we're at a full staffing of fifty-four full-time police officers, arrest records um, for the year are up forty-seven percent. Um, our parking summonings are up a hundred and eighty-three percent, two thousand one, twenty-one, twenty-six for twenty twenty-four. Uh, the next police community council meeting will be held Thursday, August first at town, um, uh, community center, our guest speaker will be, um, Sheriff Paul Arter. The Youth Coalition Valley Renegades will be held, game will be held on Tuesday, August twentieth at seven P M. And for you, those that, that participated, our July third fireworks was a great event this year. Um, and the, the drones that were used were amazing, everyone loved it. Junior Police Academy, we graduated two groups so far this year. There, there's one class graduating this Friday and another on August sixteenth. The interest in the academy continues to grow year over year with a greater number, um, registrants, registrants each year, the success of the academy has been recognized by the Orange County Youth Bureau as evidenced by the twelve thousand dollar grant that they awarded us to fund the program. As further evidence the program's success, all the spots have already been filled for this year. Last but not least, on National Night, Night Against Crime, event will be held six P M on Tuesday, August sixth, at the town of Walco Little League, um, field. Because of the great support of our sponsors this year's event, we will prize this shirt to the first fifteen hundred attendees and activities, we look forward to seeing everyone that night. Um, no comments, been a long night, we, we gave everyone the comments. And, um, we take everything to heart and make sure everyone enjoy it.
Thank you. Councilman Vannella?
I'm ready to be sure. So, uh, town of Walco Golf Course, um, they're still doing the ground maintenance and they are fertilizing still, uh, keeping the grounds as green as possible for enjoyment of play. I wanna thank them for hosting the fireworks for us on July third, amazing. And, uh, you folks have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone attending tonight, um. Uh, July fourth event was very successful, um, I wanna give a big thank you, big shout out to everyone that made it successful. DPW, Parks Department, uh, Law Enforcement Partners, it was just a great event, um, and, and. And of course, um, um, the main people that put it all together for me, I could not do this by myself, and my staff, and still here between Darlene, Mary Lou, and Larry, thank you, um, who put a lot of work into that day, um. We do have that, um, National Night Out Against Crime coming up on August sixth, I'm pretty sure the chief is gonna talk about it. And, um, there is a softball game on, on August twenty-fourth, police versus the youth coalition kids, and, you know, we, we got a pitcher that's gonna be pitching that day. And, um, you know, we'll see what's gonna happen, you know? I know that this past week, um, the Metta Colton's got lucky. So, you know, we'll see what's gonna happen on that day, and, you know, I'm supposed to be the umpire, um, and I, you know, looking to throw that pitcher out if he starts hitting balls and strikes. Um, uh, I got here the building report, so I guess the building department, being that, um, Eric Johnson's not here, so from June first to June thirty, there were a hundred and one, hundred and three permits, hundred certificates, total fees collected eighty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety cents. There were sixty-seven complaints, one thousand and sixty-nine inspections, building department is very busy. Um, I'll make this quick, I, I, I'm really, um, glad that we had this meeting, we had to come out. And, um, we do, are gonna take everything that was stated to us today into consideration and try to work this out, um, and I think it's been said more than enough that we're not looking to close the fairgrounds, with that, um, um, given to the town clerk.
Well, I'm not a racer, and all the fairgrounds people are gone, but there were a lot of people here that I went to school with. They're all still racing and are not, never did. First concert I ever saw, Michael Bolton, the Orange County Fairgrounds, and his opening act was Celine Dion. So, you can go back, swear, you can go back and. Celine Dion was the opening act. Yep.
Wow.
I was like seven.
Wow, I, I, you know, I keep hearing about all these concerts and, um, I got to see Lo's name from American Idol, Scott Mc- McBarry. Yeah, I got to see him there, two years ago, guess I missed out, um. Okay, next we have the Commission of Public Works. Well, gracias.
I can't tell you what I did at the fairgrounds, statute of limitations. No, we're good.
I'm letting you relax.
I grew up there too, good stuff. Um, just real quick, extremely busy past several months, of course, Mark read the list of things that we're doing in highway and paving. Um, in the extreme heat, I just gotta thank the, uh, the, uh, the ladies and gentlemen of the DPW, they've just been, uh, they true, the true soldiers out there working, they really have. Um, on the hottest days of the year, they wanted to pave, uh, the material works better, it actually does, it goes down better. And, uh, they stuck it out, we've done a tremendous amount of paving, and we've got some more good stuff to do. Great job, of course, by Water and Sewer, and again, these hot conditions that we have, um, they're out there working day and, you know, literally day and night. And that's awesome, uh, our shop, our general shop, uh, up to the highway garage, keeping the equipment going. Um, they've been working on Fridays because we run the equipment all week long, um, they've been doing an amazing job. Uh, Parks Crew, of course, Jay and, and their staff out there, uh, all the parks are open, it's been a crazy busy season for our parks, which is awesome. That's what we want, Circleville Park Beach is packed every day, that's what we want, good stuff. Um, Councilman Vannella talked about the golf course, golf course is doing very well. Stop out there, grab a burger, everybody forgets to actually have a little restaurant there, go out there, take somebody out to lunch, have a good time. Um, Corn Scat Ground, um, talked with them, uh, on Wednesday, actually, uh, they're doing great, they're having a great season. Um, phone's not ringing, so that means it's a good thing out there, so they're doing very well. Um, so they're doing a great job, uh, from the OEM side, of course. Uh, the OEM continues to monitor all the events, emergencies in town, uh, July third celebration was awesome, thanks for all of our partners that helped us out. Uh, we're working on all the upcoming events for the fall here, night out, uh, Community Day, et cetera. Uh, next OEM meeting, we're gonna have a meeting in the middle of August with all of our partners. Also, the Orange County Firemen's Parade is on September twenty-eighth in Pocatello. And we're gonna be meeting with, uh, their group before the OEM meeting that night. Um, so please plan on coming out to the parade, we're working with them, and of course, um, National Night Out. Um, lastly, I just wanna speak, uh, we had a couple moments of silence tonight, one specifically for John Zupetz. Uh, John Zupetz was just an amazing human being, um, I grew up literally, um, kind of in his house. Uh, John Junior and I are best of friends, um, John Zupetz came to work for the town of Walco when he was sixteen years old. Um, and he worked right up until the age of fifty-five, he was, uh, he started out as a laborer like the rest of us. Um, he retired as the highway supervisor, he worked for the town for over thirty-five years, um, and just a great guy, they used to live on the corner of Fourth Street and Silver Lake Scottstown Road, that's where they grew up. Um, his wife's grandfather, uh, Chris Locatell, worked for the town. And, uh, that's who got John his job when he first started out, uh, like he said, he started at sixteen years, or sixteen years old, literally. Um, and he just was an amazing human being, he was a great guy, probably one of the most humble people you ever met. Um, and it was a, you know, it was a real shame to lose him, you know, uh, a week ago. Uh, well, we, we've been in contact with the family, of course, I talked to John a lot. Uh, John Zupetz was also past chief of the Silver Lake Fire District, he was very active in the fire department when they lived here. Um, they built a house out in Bloomingburg back in the late eighties, um, there will be a celebration of life for John um, later in September, and I'll let everybody know when that was, or when that's going to be. But just a, just a real, real good person, when I came to work for the town in eighty-six, um, John was the highway supervisor. He had to, he had to get these phrases, he called everybody sunny boy, hey, sunny boy, come over here, sunny boy. Um, he was just a good, good human being, so we're gonna, we're gonna miss it, we really are, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief?
I'll be brief, I'll defer any baseball comments, we'll leave a lot in the field, just as fair umpiring and thing. Um, with that being said, now, Councilor Downey mentioned Sheriff Paul Arter is gonna be the speaker at the next meeting council meeting. We have to share that with everybody, social media, he's a great partner of ours, both with the Sheriff's Office, that's a great police and our own, possibly, to so many issues. But obviously, um, the Orange County Task Force and Special Operations are primary relationships with Sheriff's Office. And, and Paul's a great guy, he's been a friend of ours since back in the days of. Um, Youth Coalition, we've lost, uh, one of our mentors, one of our teachers, uh, Paul Melendez, he was, uh, he, he taught Taekwondo to our youth for many years, a great young man, just had his weight the other day. And he's gonna be missed by all the youth who he taught, um, self-respect and dignity and, and self-control, all the past five years, he was with us. And lastly, retail theft admission is still unknown, we're probably the Sheriff's Office, State Police, District Attorney, so FBI. Um, we're targeting. Um, we're targeting retail theft primarily in Galleria, it, it's gotten out of control, et cetera, et cetera, with that on business in our community. And, uh, we're putting our best foot forward in order to address this in turn, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good participation. Abso, anyone? That being said, thank you for being out this late, appreciate everyone coming out, and when it came out earlier, and when it's still around, thank you. Be safe going home and have a good night, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you, have a good night.